Welcome to the Mound City Council. It's Tuesday, June 24th at 6:00. We're in Mound City Council chambers. Can we do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. All right, I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the agenda passes. And I got the consent agenda. Does someone want to go through those four items? Can take that. Consent agenda, items A through D. A, approved payment of claims. B, approved minutes from the June 10th meeting. C, approved Resolution 25-59 approving public gathering permit for 2025 Bass Clash at Surfside Park on August 1st. D, approved Resolution 25-60 approving permits for 2025 Our Lady of the Lake Catholic Church Incredible Festival at 2385 Commerce Boulevard on Sunday, September 14th.
12th through the 14th.
12th through the 14th. All right. Got the consent agenda items. Does anybody want to talk about any of those? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Aye.
Councilmember Pew?
Councilmember?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, all that passes. So if you're here for that, those are all good to go. Number five, we got comments and suggestions from any citizen that is present that the item is not on the agenda. If you want to come up, I can give you three minutes to talk. Hey. Can you give us your name and address?
My name is Charles Warren. I live at 4636 Hampton Road in Mound. And I had delivered, I had talked in the past trying to get this letter published in your little local paper.
Yeah.
City council members, I'll just read it. Thank you for your time. I want to raise serious concerns about the new smart meters being installed by XL Energy, which take usage energy readings every 15 seconds. These meters emit a continuous electromagnetic frequency which pose two major risks, health and privacy. First, the health risks. Smart meters emit RF radiation similar to cell phones and Wi-Fi routers, but unlike those devices, we do not have a choice to turn them off. These emissions are constant and involuntary. Involuntary, excuse me. Studies from the institutions like the BioInitiative Report and the American Academy of Environmental Medicine have linked these prolonged EMF exposures to insomnia, headaches, heart arrhythmia, and even more serious long-term health effects increase cancer risk. Vulnerable populations, children and the elderly and those with pre-existing conditions are especially at risk. Second, the privacy concern. Smart meters that collect data every 15 seconds build a highly detailed profile of when you're home, asleep, cooking, showering, or away. This granular data could be analyzed to reveal personal habits and routines, essentially acting as a surveillance device on private citizens. This constitute, this may constitute a violation of the Fourth Amendment, which protects against unreasonable search and seizures. Collecting such data without explicit informed consent could be challenged as unconstitutional. We must ask, we are trading our health and constitutional rights for convenience and corporate profit. I urge the council to consider a moratorium on mandatory smart meter installation until infinite studies and opt-out protections are fully reviewed. Now, I also included the webpage of the AAEM and also a BioInitiative Report, which is the receipts for these, this layout. I personally have opted out of the XL Energy and I, they still changed my meter out to something that collects data every 15 seconds. It states right on there, non-EMF that doesn't, and I have a meter reader that I confirm this. I can go over to my neighbors. His emits readings every 15 seconds. But I, the collection, and I just wanted to know. I wanted to start locally. I reached out to the, to the, I forget your name. I'm sorry. Man. To put it in the newsletter, maybe have a public awareness, maybe do a survey of whether people are even aware of this. It's, it's a concern. And her suggestion was like, we don't deal with that. We're not part of the state. Agency, but I think Mound should have a say of what's on our homes.
Yeah.
So I thank you for your time.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Again, we just got this obviously tonight.
Yes.
Take a look.
Review it.
Yeah.
And then possibly, I took the night off work. I work nights to show up.
Appreciate it.
And it's just, I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, this is great info. And I also opted out. And are you getting charged now to have them come read your meter?
And that's where, yes, I get a 15 month or $15 monthly surcharge for a meter reader guy to come out to the house and actually hook up his little probe. And this is where I was asking him. I said, what is the purpose of this? And well, we just need, it gives the company the demand on the grid. And I said, what does that serve? And I'm an electronics technician. Why couldn't you put one at the end of the island or at the substation? That would serve the same purpose as individual homes.
The emissions also have been found, you know, if you have like a tree really close or a bush, you know, you can see part of the tree that just is fried from the emissions.
I have seen those video. There's, there's reports that they start fires on the homes. I, there's all sorts of quirkiness. I just, I, my goal would be to get my regular little dial analog meter back. But I wanted to make it aware to our town that they just, it wasn't really discussed. They just put it on everyone's home. And I find a problem with that.
Yeah.
So.
Agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, number six, we got Orno Police Department with the May 2025 Activity Report. Before you leave, we want to take a picture.
Yeah, I'll have him come up here and introduce himself so you guys know who he is. I'll just go through this stuff. And if there's anything you guys have for business with us. I apologize for last council meeting. There was a priority call that we were, we had to be on. So I had my deputy chief contact. And again, I apologize, I don't like to miss these, but I had to be there. So I looked at the calls for the month of May through June. Nothing, calls have gone up, but there are just more of them because there's more activity. People are out of school. People are out enjoying the warm weather and they're on our lakes. So, you know, we have a few more calls for service now through whenever the weather decides to go cold again. So, but nothing out of the ordinary. You know, we're same, same responses, same everything. So I think we're kind of even keel there and keeping things on the same up and up. But we are busier. We're busier throughout the day. So. Nothing much more. The Spirit of the Lakes, I was advised by Officer Schultz, who works on that committee. She said everything is on task. And I believe there is a website now that is announcing all your, she wanted me to make sure you guys knew that there is a website that's announcing all your events and everything. So she seems to be excited about that. So that'll be coming up soon. And then we have our new officer starting here now in July. July 7th will be our new officer out of our cadet program. His name is Colton Beck. He will be starting his Phase Zero on Monday morning, the 7th. So hopefully, he's very green, just right out of school. So this will be a slow process. And we don't expect him on the road, you know, within the month or within two months. We're going to make sure we train him up and get him on the road with proper training. So. Do you guys have anything for me? Any questions, any concerns?
Council have any questions?
I had one question. One of the calls made mention of a predator. Was that related to the previous issue about the person?
Predator?
Living in Mount, yeah, it's only about predator.
Oh, it could be a POR. So if there's a POR living in our area, we, they have to report to us. Mostly it's making a report that they're in compliance. We get updated information on them. And it goes in as a report that one of our investigators will probably, will handle and deal with. So we have a specific POR officer that deals with them.
Okay.
Any other questions? I didn't have anything this time. E-bikes. They're getting bad. We'll bring this up in the police commission again, but let me, I don't have this handy for anybody, but this is just something I saw from another police department, kind of our neighbor. And it was kind of like a little chart that they put out on their social. And it says, you know, do they have pedals? Yes or no? You wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't think of it, but if you don't have pedals, then you go, oh, it's a off-highway motorcycle.
Yep.
Right? My buddy's got one.
Yep.
He's like, it's awesome. He takes it on the other trail north of here. I don't care, it's not our town.
Yeah.
But we see them all over, right? I know all of us can attest to it. These kids just go, you know, right by us, just, you know, 100 miles an hour, without helmets. There's two, two girls, two guys on them, you know. Again, I'm not trying to have you solve our problem, but we're going to, we're going to talk in the police commission.
Yeah, I just sent you pictures. So Friday night, we had two boys popping wheelies in the middle of Surfside Park.
Oh, on the, on the grass?
Yes, on the grass. And so I did call the non-emergency number. They did send an officer out. By the time he got there, they had left. And he corrected me and said, that's not an electric bike. That is a motorbike. A dirt bike.
This doesn't have pedals, does it?
No, it's a dirt bike. They were popping wheelies right down the middle of Surfside, in the grass. So unfortunately, he said he would continue to look for them the rest of the evening, but I drove around up in the other direction from where he was going and he didn't, I didn't see anyone, so.
Yeah, it, it is an overwhelming problem. And Excelsior to our neighbors over here, they are battling it hard. We are, it just seems like, God, it's just such a problem that once we get to the area to try to corral it, they're gone. I mean, they do, they move pretty good and they, they're agile vehicles. And, you know, we do have Bike Patrol. We are out this summer. So if, you know, they can sneak up on them, you know, they can grab them more. We just, we need about 100 officers to catch, you know, just to be around and catch them when they're going. But, you know, we have caught people like down here at zero gravity. They'll come flying out of here and the guys will be sitting here and we'll grab a few of them, so.
So I don't believe, I asked Maggie late this afternoon, and I'm sure she hasn't had a chance to address it, but Scott, I think we should look at maybe passing an ordinance of some sort that restricts motorized vehicles from being on our public parks and with some fines. And so that when these officers do, you know, catch someone doing this, they can go give the parents a warning because they're mostly younger kids. And then the second offense would be something where we would actually apply a found RFE. Because I mean, this is not only tearing up our private property, but it's also dangerous. There are little kids down there in that park playing. And those guys were literally popping wheelies right through the middle of the park.
And, yeah, again, that's terrible. I'm also just worried that one of these kids are going to get horrendously hit by cars.
And a lot of seniors have complained about on the trail. They're afraid because also the individuals don't practice the policy of saying, on your left, do. So they, they don't hear it because they're silent. And then suddenly it's whizzing by. And I've noticed even on Commerce, they're riding them on the sidewalks.
Right on the middle of the road. Yeah. At like 40 miles an hour. They don't stop at stop signs.
I guess what we're saying, and it sounds like we're on the same page. If you need to pull people over and give them a warning, it's, you know, I know you can't catch everybody and we're going to see things that you're never going to be, ever see because that's how the world works. But it's getting old.
Well, maybe we should do some preventive stuff. You know, next year at school year, should there be a program that talks about this biking and, and the protocol and ethics of it? I mean, do a positive piece as well as have a punitive action for violating. So I think we need to do both.
And I'm going to share that picture with the police commission because I want to do some kind of thing on our social. And just say, you know.
Are these your children?
No.
Not your children, are these people, are these kids in the picture your children?
No, they're not my kids, you know.
I know they're not your kids. I would have.
Yeah, you know who they are.
I'd have grabbed one of them if it was yours.
I actually wanted e-bike and I know you have.
Sold it. We, our officers drive, we have ones.
I think they're awesome, but.
It's a big difference between that kind of bike and the assist.
Yeah, that's a dirt bike.
Well, and yeah, I did it through New York. Yeah, I was doing the pedal assist, you know, the city bikes, right?
Yeah, I have pedal assist.
Through Central Park, I mean, that's fun.
Yeah.
They are awesome, but it's the inexperienced riders. Just they're naturally younger and they don't.
Yeah.
Well, their brains aren't developed.
They don't know what to look out for or the fact that drivers aren't watching out for them.
There are some basic laws, aren't there? Aren't there some basic laws about certain age you have to be?
Helmets.
Helmets. I never see any of them with helmets.
But there's these new bikes that are, there's not even pedals. It's a motorcycle, basically.
Right.
It's an electric motorcycle.
I mean, I think that.
And they rip down Dakota.
We need to distinguish what's in the existing laws. Maybe publish it. Maybe we need to have signs in our park about it.
But we can't put up signs if we don't have an ordinance that says you can't do this.
Well, yes, I know that too. But I'm also saying, I think we need to do a holistic approach, not just, you know, do the ordinance and be punitive. Let's try and be positive and educate.
The other thing, I saw an electric scooter. This is as I'm coming by the new hotel, right? So I'm coming that way. He comes over the median, not like in between the, it was like an opening there. And then he comes on, and then he's going right by the rail company, right? He's coming on the shoulder, you know, against the, it's like, you're going to get smoked.
Yeah.
And he's going 30 miles an hour on the scooter.
And it's not limited to the e-bikes and all the, the, regular bikers do this stuff too. And we, you know, we try to grab them because, I mean, they have to stop, they have to abide by all the same laws we do on the roads, you know, stop at stop signs and all this. So there's times like you get these big groups out and they're just taking up the road, you know. They're supposed to be as far to the right as, as they can. But it's one of those things that, you know, it's just not that, you know, they might be singled out, but, you know, the regular pedal bikes are doing it too.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention, and again, we'll, we'll talk to the chief again a little more. And then on that note, I just want to say thank you and Allah enforcement. You know, I got a call Saturday morning. And it's, you know, I'm sure you all saw, right? And I'm sitting there drinking my coffee and like, oh my God, what is happening? And, you know, then he, you know, he calls me and he says, hey, just, you know, FYI, you know, we don't know anything yet, but, you know. And I appreciated the gesture. And then, of course, we forwarded to the council as well.
Yep.
Appreciate you guys, even, I don't know if you guys knew this, but they're kind of driving by all of our houses just as a precaution. Until later in the day, we found out, you know, exactly what was going on. So, or what we think was going on, so.
Yeah, we were on, pretty much on alert until they got them, until it was over on Sunday night, so.
Well, we appreciate it. Do you want to introduce yourselves to your?
Yep. Don't mind, this is our Officer Brayden and his dog. I'll let him do some talking here and he can give you what this dog's all about and what his program is.
Cool. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Sorry for all the noise back there.
No, sorry we made you wait, so.
My name is Brayden Sherman. I've been a police officer with Orno now for three years. And this is the first time we've had a patrol canine in a while now. So, and I got the opportunity to be a handler for him. His name's Onyx. He is a year and a half old German Shepherd. He was imported from Slovakia. Onyx and I attended a 12-week training academy and just graduated a couple of weeks ago. So we're learning the ropes and getting back into it. And he's doing a really good job. He's certified in evidence collection, tracking, narcotics detection, obedience. He's a high-drive dog and he loves to work. As you can tell, he, he wants to work. That's why he makes a lot of noise back there, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Well, appreciate it.
His swearing in will be July 14th.
Okay.
Where we'll be giving him a badge and put his little paw print on the oath of office and welcome him to our agency, so.
Nice, nice, cool. And that's going to be at Orno City Hall?
Yep, Orno City Hall during our council meeting, so.
Oh, during a council meeting?
Yep, right at the beginning.
Nice.
Well, welcome, Onyx.
Can we do a quick picture?
Yeah, for sure.
I'm not that much of a dog person.
Yeah, I will. Let's go.
Yeah, go ahead.
You don't need to. Maggie?
I'll take.
I understand. If you want to move over, I'm just going to get out of the picture. You don't need attorneys in the picture.
So, oh, so I can stand in the picture back here?
Oh, that's so nice. Look at how well behaved. I had to give you a little room for cropping.
He is friendly?
Yeah.
I know, right?
Yep, yep.
Well, thanks for that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That was fun.
All right, number seven, we got Justin Nelson with ABDO presenting the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Welcome.
Thank you. It'll be easy to follow that up. I don't know if it gets much more exciting than that.
Bring a dog.
Makes sense. I'm actually Alex, Alex Triple. I'm a senior associate with ABDO. I've been with them for five years now, working on the audit with you guys for three years now. So got a good handle for what you guys got going on here and excited to have some of your time tonight and go over this. Little introduction to what will be going over tonight. We'll start the audit results and then we'll dive into some detail on the general fund and then move on to the special revenue funds, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and then some key performance indicators to wrap it up. Start with the audit results. We have, we'll start with the auditor's opinion here. We're issuing a modified opinion on the report for, the only reason we wouldn't offer a clean report here, an unmodified opinion, is due to GASB 87, 75, and 68. So what those are, those GASB standards that have not been adopted, therefore we can't provide you an unmodified opinion. Everything outside of that, 87 is for leases. GASB 75 is for other post-employment benefits. And GASB 68 is for the net pension liability. We don't report on those. Like I said, we can't offer that unmodified opinion. Everything outside of those three things is all fairly stated in all material aspects. There aren't many concerns there. Also, no internal control findings. Everything that is in place, every process for internal controls is being followed, followed in here too. No issues there. Moving on to, sorry, we're still here. I'll go back up. No problem. Minnesota legal compliance, we had no findings to report there either. That's just making sure that payments are being made on time. Bids and quotes are being, the correct process is being followed there. Again, no issues. Moving on to the general fund, we have three lines here. That top orange line representing the budget for the respective year down below. That middle yellow line shows what percentage of that budget is made up of your unrestricted unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And that 20% is the city's fund balance policy. So there's a healthy increase there from 51.3% to 64% in the unassigned fund balance. And then that is well above your 20% policy goal of the 20% of the following year's budget. That cushion creates some opportunities. You can use it to fund other funds that are maybe needing some cash. You can reserve it for future projects. It opens you up to a lot. It also gives you the opportunity to maybe revisit that fund balance policy to be more in line with what you're actually seeing throughout the year. If this is where you want your general fund at, it's not a bad idea to implement a policy that kind of follows along with what's actually going on.
I'm going to stop you.
Yeah.
So I'm sure, I won't ask Noah to come up, but I'm sure we have a reason for our big increase. And maybe we should talk about that a little bit more in our finance, our next meeting.
That was our interesting comment that we had that meeting.
Oh, interesting, got it.
So.
We know what it is.
Moving on to the budget to actual statement here, we're still in the general fund. You guys showed favorable variances in both revenues and expenditures. Revenues, we're able to exceed that budget amount of about $164,000. There are a couple of different things that contribute to that. Like Noah just said, the investments were a lot higher than the budget amount of 20,000. They came in at around 300,000. And then taxes, which includes fiscal disparities, franchise fees, those also exceeded the budget amount by about $200,000. The total is about 500,000, but it's offset in a couple of different places within the revenues. And then a favorable variance in expenses as well. Most of that is made up of less public works expenses in the general fund than was budgeted for. It's about 140,000 less than what was budgeted for. That leaves you with 1.1 million in excess revenues over expenditures before these transfers. That budget transfer out to the liquor store, I mean, that, sorry, that transfer in of $300,000 from the liquor fund. And then those transfers out, about 300,000 to the seal coating. And then about 175, 750,000 to fund the city sheriff fire department services. All in all, creating that $358,000 increase in fund balance. Again, good jump up in fund balance from '23 to '24. These two graphs show your total revenues and transfers in in the general fund on the left and on the right, the total expenditures and transfers out of the general fund. For the most part, everything here looking pretty consistent. Those taxes continue to increase steadily. And then the intergovernmental revenue, you can see jumped up a little in 2023. And then the intergovernmental revenue, you can see jumped up a little in twenty twenty-three. That's from that public safety aid you guys received at the end of that year. And then the expenditures, again, super consistent. Um, public safety dropped down a little bit. Um, that's mostly due, there were, there were less building inspection fees in twenty-four than there were in twenty-three, so you'll have that small decrease there. Moving on to the special revenue fund balances here, um, we'll start with that big increase in fund balance in the area service fund. Um, that was uh, it, without the transfer in to pay for the services, a little bit of a decrease, but that transfer in offset those costs in that fund. And like I said, that was all budgeted for according to plan, so you saw a little increase there. Um, the dock fund didn't change much and the HRA fund had a small decrease um, due to that transit center paver replacement project. So you, without that, it would have been pretty steady, but you guys had that project, so that decreased a little bit. And then down here, just showing that steady increase in total fund balance for the special revenue fund. That one non-spendable bar in twenty twenty-two, that's from that fire truck that was prepaid, and since that was prepaid, the funds are obviously non-spendable. So that'll drop off in next year's presentation. The debt service funds, there's a lot here. I'll kind of just summarize what we're looking at up top. This is all of the debt service funds. This is just the governmental debt. So you see your total cash and your total assets right now don't exceed those remaining bonds in the governmental funds, but those will obviously be funded throughout the years um, from tax levy and special assessment revenue. Down below, you can see the schedule for your debt payments um, decreased dramatically over the next ten years. And after that twenty twenty-eight, it jumps, it jumps down quite a bit, so trending in the right direction there. Moving on to the capital project funds, that major capital improvement funds, uh, the tax levy was able to cover all the costs incurred in that fund, so that provided a good increase in fund balance there. Um, other things that stand out here is that big decrease in the capital replacement vehicles. Um, a lot of purchases this year, they just exceeded that levy amount to cause that decrease. Um, and then that community investment fund received a transfer in from that fund you see at the bottom, that TIF one-three fund. The remaining funds, once that fund was closed out, were transferred to that community investment fund and able to increase that fund balance. Again, that graph below is showing a steady increase in assigned fund balance and um, looking good. Again, kind of a lot going on here up top for the liquor fund. We're basically just comparing your sales, gross profit, all that good stuff across the past three years. When you compare it to your own data from the past three years, the gross profit is steadily increasing. Um, the operating income is steadily increasing as you would want to see. On the far right there, we compare it to the statewide average, and you guys are also doing well compared in, comparing to the statewide average as well. One thing that's a little different in twenty twenty-four is you'll see that large due from other funds amount, that one point four five five million. Um, that was to cover a cash deficit and help fund the other enterprise funds. Down below, you'll see sales are steady, and then we have graphs and bars down there kind of showing exactly what you have up top and just reflecting those same amounts. These next four slides will have the same graph for each enterprise fund. Up top, you'll have in dark orange, the operating revenue, and then in yellow, the operating costs, and then the black is the debt payments. Um, a lot of these are gonna look really consistent. Um, you'll see that gap in twenty twenty-four between the revenues and expenses is growing a little bit. Um, and that's reflected down below by that cash deficit starting to get further and further away from um, even. And then up top, that black line is your target cash balance. That line is fifty percent of your operating costs. Moving on to the sewer fund, again, costs are increasing. Revenues stayed pretty steady with a slight decrease. Um, this fund has a significant more amount of cash in it. A big increase from twenty twenty-three. A good chunk of that is made up of um, bond proceeds in twenty twenty-four. About one point two seven million in unspent bond proceeds included in that total. Recycling fund, super consistent. Everything's kind of increasing in line with one another. That gap isn't growing, which is good, and is, that cash balance is well above your targeted amount. Stormwater fund, you can see how those debt payments are far exceeding the operating revenues. I know you guys are all aware of that. Um, just again, contributing to that cash deficit down below as those uh, revenues aren't increasing and the debt payments are staying pretty consistent. Here we have a graph of your total cash balances across the entire city. Um, the colors represent different kinds of funds and how much is made up in each of that. Uh, you can see the biggest thing that jumps out in this is that large increase in capital project cash, and then also that large decrease in enterprise fund cash. We'll wrap up here with some key performance indicators. We are comparing that black line. That is the city of Mound, and then the orange bar is class four cities, cities with ten thousand population or less. And then the yellow is gonna be Hennepin County. Uh, we'll start with the tax rate. You guys are right in line with Hennepin County and well below the class four cities and actually trending a little bit down. And the taxes per capita are going up in line with that Hennepin County. We only get the data, this comparative data, class four cities in Hennepin County. It's usually a year delayed. Unfortunately, this year it is two years delayed. Um, but you can kind of see that graph is typically gonna trend right in line with that last uh, black bar we have going across there for you guys. Moving on to debt, as you guys continue to pay down those balances, that will continue to go down. Right now, you're above the class four city and Hennepin County comparisons for both the per capita and um, total expenditures for the year. And then we have your current, your total current expenditures per capita comparing to the class four cities in Hennepin County again, and pretty steady and pretty consistently below the averages for both in the per capita, and then well below the averages for capital expenditures um, per capita, sorry, current expenditures of capital. That is all I've got for you guys, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Ms. Counsel, have any questions?
I don't know if I have a specific question, um, but on page four or slide four, if you can go back to that, did anything, um, does that look pretty typical, like as a, like the fund balance, like in our city policy, on what we want to reserve to be? Does that seem like um, appropriate for our size and everything? I know, like the audit said, there was no weird findings or anything, but.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Um, I think where you guys are at is typical. That fund balance policy, we typically see between anywhere from thirty to fifty percent. So it's not too far off from that, but I mean, you guys have a good enough cushion to bump that up if you wanted. Um, it's mainly to make sure that you have enough operating cash to continue funding the general fund operations. Um, that's not really a concern right now based on being at sixty-four percent of the following year's budget, but just something to consider with that policy. I mean, there's really no risk if you guys are keeping a healthy fund balance, but just to be more consistent and accurate with what you guys have going on.
Okay. I guess it was more of a question for, for you and maybe for Noah too, but like, you know, we always want to make sure that we're over or adequately prepared for like spikes and CIP changes and all that stuff, but I mean, is there any, you know, concerning the slides where our debt is way higher? I mean, are there any adjustments here that, in your opinion, that we could benefit from to help counter that, or would that just leave us ill-prepared down the road?
Yeah, I mean, that is up to you guys and how you want to handle that. You can move money from your general fund to help with stuff, but at the same time, it's like, that's your main operating fund. You want to be able to be prepared with that too. Um, I'm sure you guys have had discussions about what, what, if, what the plans are to help out the enterprise funds. Noah, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
The FMP's goal is to maintain between forty-five and fifty-five. Keep in mind, we have six point five negative in enterprise cash. Whether the due from other fund is in the general fund or in the liquor fund, it doesn't matter. We still have to cash flow all thirty funds throughout the year. So that's why I was referring to operating at twenty percent is a minimum level, but the cushion difference is able to fund your deficit in the storm fund and water fund throughout the year.
Okay.
I have the cash flow January through December, not necessarily on an accounting spreadsheet, but in a bank. And so that's where that comes into play.
Okay.
So as we unwind all this, as we go through changing from the FMP, this will normalize itself. So if you look at the FMP, it's projected a spike in twenty-four, and it's a slow meltdown.
Cool. Thanks. So, so are you saying, would it be better to, as a policy, raise it to tw- to like thirty? That's what most other cities do?
That's what we typically see, and I think there's, there's exact numbers on the OSA for recommendations, the OSA's website.
Okay. It's not something, it doesn't matter either way.
Correct.
But it, it's just a potential policy, just in case, so we don't get in trouble down the road.
I don't think it'd be about getting in trouble. It's more so just.
Like not having enough money, I mean.
If you're having a policy in place that isn't in line with what's actually happening.
So you're saying twenty is like way too low. Why are we that low?
Yeah.
Wouldn't we have been at fifty some?
And we don't have a problem with it either. This is not something we have a problem with. It's just for your guys' benefit to more accurately plan for the future.
And it wouldn't affect like our bond rating or anything?
No, absolutely not.
Well, Noah will steer us right way on that, I'm sure. Cool. All right. Was there anything else? All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Could I ask, um, as we move into budget?
Yeah.
Can we explore that topic of increasing it to thirty? You know, as part of our budget conversation for next year?
Um, yeah, I mean, do you want the finance committee to look at it, or do you want to chat with Noah about it, or?
Well, I'd, I'd like finance to talk about it, and as a counsel for us to talk about it.
Okay. Well, do you want to note that in our next meeting?
Yeah, so Eller's recommendation is forty-five to fifty-five, and Maggie's actually working out a guideline in that policy.
Oh, so we're already working.
That would be what we would come with, what Eller's told us to do. So, once we're through the first year of the actual FMP, somewhere between forty-five and fifty-five is when they, they suggested. So it's actually higher than the thirty percent that you guys are talking about, and so we're working on our financial policies as we speak, but that's what we've come to, but.
And then when is this gonna happen?
It would happen sometime throughout the year. I mean, there's a lot of financial policies they often try to get.
By the end of the year?
Yeah.
You'll bring us a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Unless you don't want to do it. You're okay with?
No, I, I think we should be looking at it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, number eight, we got Lost Lake Commons Phase Two Design Update. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Simmons, Senior City Engineer. Uh, what we have in front of you is the next stage of Lost Lake Commons Phase Two. Uh, and i- if anybody was astute and noticed, there are some graphics in here that are labeled uh, Harbor District. That is because they are old.
Oh.
And we are talking a little bit about where we've come from. Uh, but just to, to rehash a little bit, Phase Two is going to include uh, lighting elements, landscaping, art installations, concrete paving, seating in the fire pit, uh, and we have a discussion here on all these things that have been considered. Uh, I don't know if anybody followed the link here at the bottom of the document. There's some pretty interesting stuff in there from the public engagement. If you didn't happen to look at that before the meeting, it's fascinating to go read those comments after the fact. And we've got some graphics. I don't know if they're in there, but we've got them handy of, to just kind of distill some of the comments into uh, some takeaways. You can kick us.
You talking about that link right there?
Yep. The, the blue text is a link. If that wasn't, if that wasn't apparent, my apologies.
Blue text.
Scroll, scroll, yeah, right there. Lost Lake Commons P two Design Update. That, that sucker is a link in one of the folders.
Yeah.
One of the folders in there is the, the engagement results. That's, that's why I'm talking about it, because it might have, it might have been kind of sneaky. No, you're, you're good.
It's a lot of feedback.
Well, I mean, we ha- we haven't, in these processes before, spent a lot of time asking the residents directly what they think unless they come up and talk at this microphone, right? So I, for one.
We usually do have engagement.
Yes.
But this was a fantastic way to, to weigh in on this next phase. I, I was surprised we got a hundred and eighty votes.
There was more than one comment in there that said, "Thank you for asking what we think."
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I'll call that a success.
Yeah.
You keep scrolling, Jesse. Okay, so uh, the reason this slide, like I mentioned, says Harbor District Park, just flashing us back a little bit to the path on how we've gotten here. This is from the HKGI study and uh, the, the park master plan, so what we started with uh, before we've gotten, you know, to the meat and potatoes of how we're actually going to execute. Keep, keep scrolling, Jesse. Uh, and I don't intend to go through all of this, but this was just the initial phase of things that were suggested that could be out there, and I, I feel like we're doing a pretty good job of, of pinging almost all of those. Okay, so, you know, let's stop there for just a second. There are some boundaries here between Phase One and Phase Two and the things that we are working on. Some things that are still uh, in the future, like the shelter and the performance area, that we are gonna set ourselves up to build in the future. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Keep going. Okay, so uh, we've split the park apart into three phases. Phase one substantially complete, as you can see out there. And now we're moving on to Phase Two. I guess I probably didn't need to read that list at the beginning of this because we had it in here, but it seemed important to kind of set the stage. Uh, seating area at the harbor maybe wasn't a thing that I specifically mentioned before as well. And then Phase Three again is that open air shelter adjacent to the plaza, and then the additional performance area improvements. So the future, the structure uh, adjacent to the plaza will require some footings, uh, and we, we went back and forth on how can we put in plaza space? Do we plan for the footings? Uh, we brought in a couple of our structural engineers and one of our architects and talked about, is there something we can do even though we haven't designed this yet? And ultimately, the takeaway was that um, it wasn't possible for us to put footings in now, so we're gonna set ourselves up to be able to do that in the future, just because without it designed, we didn't know exactly what we needed to do there. But we were trying to make sure that there was, was as little rework as possible, or we're not going back and, you know, tearing up a bunch of new things. Uh, so the portion of the plaza will be turf until Phase Three is constructed, so the plaza as built at the end of Phase Two will be a little bit smaller than the finished product at the end of Phase Three. Uh, the performance area i- is uh, right down by the lake there, near the dock, if everybody knows what I'm talking about. Um, that will be set up so that we're gonna take the pavers out, we're gonna have some seating around that, and then there's going to be just sort of a grass area in the middle of that that eventually could be converted to something else. Uh, one thing to note, we're getting rid of the boulder wall that's there, and we're going to sort of a, a multipurpose. It's gonna be a wall and it's also gonna be seating. And then there are two alternates included in the prices we're gonna talk about in just a second. One of those is to repave the trail in that area, and one of those is to replace the boardwalk decking so that we refresh that with some uh, nice new walking surface. A little bit more on that Phase Three and where the structure is gonna go, that maroon blob on there will be the future structure adjacent to the plaza. Also, you can see the fire ring area starting to come together nicely on there. Nice little visual. Also, Matt brought this and all of the concepts and the working pieces of this to the Parks Commission meeting. Sherry, I believe you were there for that. Uh, it sounds like there was some very good discussion about the elements there. Uh, talked a lot about the differences between the options and came away with some recommendations of the things we've got now. So the, the community survey uh, with the questions about, you know, rotating or permanent art, do we do kid focused? Uh, that was really good in helping us guide what we want to do for the art walk. And also, we asked for some feedback on the interpretive signs. Uh, you know, there's a couple of different ways that that can go. You know, there's only so much history. We can't put boards everywhere, but also what are our priorities is what we ask the community. What do we want to communicate about the history of this area? History of Mound. So that was a, a, that question actually, in general, had a lot of very specific responses that you could tell came from people's opinions about the area that we definitely would not have heard had we not asked that question that way. So I thought that was very useful. So out of all the options for the fire pit, uh, where we're headed right now is the river rock style. That is the same theme that we have going around town in a couple of places, like the Bollards along Shoreline Drive are a similar, you know, tumbled river rock look. Uh, after much discussion, we've decided that gas would be the preference there. It's the lowest maintenance, it's the easiest, it's the one the fire chief will let us get away with. So that's, that's a sort of an easy one to make, but it was a good discussion to have. Uh, the seating area near the future performance, uh, these are sort of those attached bench seat style picnic tables, and some of these will be ADA compatible, so if you see in the shapes there, where you see what is essentially a table with four chairs around it, some of them only have three, so that they are ADA compliant. Making sure that we are accessible to all of Mound's residents. Uh, out of the discussion at the Parks Commission, uh, obviously we pivoted to include some of the ADA, and then those will also be able to accommodate umbrellas to provide some shade there, because there's not any mature trees along that section. It's kind of a big open space of sky, thinking about sitting there baking in the sun, you know, I don't know, listening to some local jazz or whatever ends up in that performance space. Some umbrellas do kind of sound nice. Uh, one important thing there, no reuse of the pavers, just in general. I appreciate that you are all supportive of our mission to try and do away with the pavers after all the problems we had with those around town in the last twenty years. This is a different version of the same area, a little more schematic, just to show what we're after with the walking surface and some of the planting beds and things there. And then this is highlighting the removal of the boulder wall, turning that into a sort of a perimeter seating. So that will help both define the future performance area and provide some additional seating. And then, for now, the white void space in the middle would just be left as green space, grass. So through all of the feedback on the Art Walk displays, which there has some fun comments in there, the top choice was the rotating art, and I believe there was a rotating art with a local emphasis, I think. Was that how that was worded, Matt? Does that sound right? That's fair, that's fair. Either way, the takeaway is that people liked the idea of the rotating art so that they can keep it interesting.
What were the other top comments for that?
They're all in there, you want to hear a couple?
Sure.
Or should we wait to the end?
We can wait.
Let's wait to, let's wait to the end.
Wait till you get done, but yes, I would like to have them as well.
Those, I'm sorry, Jesse, if you go back for just one second. That, that, that one right now, right there that's labeled changeable cabinet is one of the concepts that we used. The idea here is that it's lockable, you know, it's got a glass surface to protect, or some sort of surface to protect the art. But that can be swapped out, you know, so we can get engagement from the schools, you know, police scout troop, whatever it may be, whoever is interested in contributing, or professional art as well. The monument sign, part of what we came away from this with is that there is a design guide from some of the other park improvements that we have not seen utilized in all of the parks. But we are going to be utilizing this sign style, and then, in this case, we're going to be updating the park sign with the correct name, all of those things, adding some plantings. And then the interpretive signage, we're planning for three or four of those around the park. From the community engagement feedback, we heard that people liked the historical focus. So we've got a lot of places we can pull that from around here, you know, the history of Tonka Toys, the history of Native Americans in this area. There's some very good comments in there about respecting the history and the importance of the history of Mound to the residents, which I love to read. And then also, we would be remiss if we wasted our opportunity to talk again about water quality, you know, and stormwater management, since we are all stewards of the lake, being in Mound. So one of the signs will be about water quality. So lighting and electrical, because we're going to have a very nice community space, we're also going to have it lit, so it is gorgeous and safe. We're going to have a similar style of light poles on the north and south sides, and that will be similar to some of the ones we have in town already. We will also have bollard lights along the promenade, so those are a little less impactful, you know, shorter, but still provide some light for the walking path. We'll have accents on the art, and then thanks to Ryan, there will be sneaky outlets everywhere for Christmas lights. Okay, I'm hoping they're sneaky, I don't want them to be obvious. Go plug your electric car in there. Plantings, we came away from the Parks Commission with a preference for native plantings. I see that a lot around the area, around the region. We've done some of this, you know, we have an entire park not too far away that is all native and water-friendly plants. So we will continue kind of that theme as well. Cost estimate, this is important. So the table there that says Table Two, Harbor District Park Improvements, that is the cost estimate that was used in the current capital improvement plan. So the number that you have in the capital improvement plan is just shy of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on the ninety-five percent designs that are also in that shared folder link, splashing some of those things up on the screen today. That design plus the two alternates that are to replace the boardwalk decking and to repave the trail or refresh the trail surface, we're currently at seven hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars. So we're coming in under that at the moment. Not bid yet, though, so we'll have some bid numbers to compare it to. Project schedule, here we are on June twenty-fourth. We anticipate this to be a combination of this fall and next spring wrap-up, so that thing should be nice and green and usable for next summer. And I will pause there, unless anybody has any other questions they don't want to forget, yes?
You know, on the performance seating where we're going to use the boulders, I'm really concerned that we make sure that there's accessible seating, because boulder seating is not going to work for people who have some physical disabilities.
Sure.
So we have to figure out how to incorporate the other.
So I'm sorry if I was unclear, Sherri. There's currently a boulder wall there that isn't seating-friendly, and our intent is to replace the boulder wall with something that has a flat surface, so probably more modular block, so that it is more friendly for seating. And then, right behind that, we will have the ADA-compliant, you know, the picnic tables with the attached chairs, and then also room for wheelchairs.
Yeah, and then, and then the similar format, so what's going on there now, there's a path to go, to stay up high, go around the wall, and then-
You should come up here, Matt, so you have the microphone.
The two, the two lakeside paths there are still going to be able to get anybody down to the lower level. And then, this is where the boulder wall is now, that, that'll actually likely be a port and place wall, just some space there, but then the grass will all still be, you know, pretty dark, pretty flat down there, like it is now, similar to now.
I'm confused with the seating, so are you saying that the seating is raised?
So there, yeah, so just imagine-
A short retaining wall that you can sit on top of.
It's a short wall, so then the whole area, I wonder if we got a picture of that somewhere?
I didn't see one.
I don't know that we did.
I didn't see one.
That's, that's, that grass area, it's got that circle that's there, those rocks all along the side, it's like a retaining wall, but it's not as many as-
And it's about two feet lower than the concrete here, and then all of this seating.
Is that the current area that we go out and look at the?
Yep, yeah, it'll be very similar.
Are you redoing that whole thing, or is it, you're just adding a stone wall around?
Yeah, we're focused, we're getting in this nice seating space here, and then we're kind of redirecting the paths through there and replacing those. A lot of those are the pavers now, and they kind of, what was left of the old shape going around the roadway is still in there, so it looks kind of odd. So we're cleaning that all up and making it look nice.
We're reworking a lot of things that are remnants of having the road through there. And so we're trying to not completely ditch what's there, but we are altering it so it's more friendly for the uses that we want to see in the park.
Well, okay, help me understand, so let's say there's music in the park or something there. How, where are people sitting in those little tables? Or can people still bring their lawn chairs to the yard?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so the, the general idea is a band would probably set up down here, either on the boardwalk or in the green space there. And then, whether they're, that part is still to be figured out, but assume they'd be on a stage. And then this is all sloping up, so everybody can kind of sit here, and they should still be able to see them all the way.
And are you creating the slope? Because it doesn't feel slope to me right now.
It's, it's very gradual, but it is.
Okay.
There's quite a bit of elevation there right now, I'm sorry, Sherri.
And there's quite a breeze that goes through there, too. So we need to take advantage of the breeze, because it kind of comes over the farmer's market lot across the top of the hill there.
Yeah, if, in that, the stuff that, if you follow the link, the platform we use for this puts together some kind of neat, you know, if you don't want to read the whole thing. So the couple of graphics that are in here are, you know, residents identified their preferred duration for selected sculptures within the park. We got seventy-five percent said they preferred rotating, twenty-five percent said they preferred permanent, you know, and there's pros and cons in a handful of comments here. Overall, there was strong support for sculptures by local artists that blend in with and incorporate the local nature and history of Mound. Also included in our cost estimate right now is some money, that, the one twenty is in the seven forty-one?
It's in there, yeah.
Is include, included in that number is a cost to commission some art. So for us to, I don't know that we've hammered through exactly how we're going to-
That's the art dealer?
Chase that process?
I guess I'm a little concerned, too, because I started looking at this data that was reported back on the Parks Commission's last meeting, and they're talking about the questionnaire. Now, I get that you're doing the ones where they check the box, but I still see an awful lot of comments in other comments that are saying, "No art, no art, no art, what a waste of money." "We need more green space." I mean, there are quite a few on here that say, "No art." So where is that displayed in your report back? I mean, if we're going to ask these people what they think, we need to listen to them.
That's, that's fair, if we, if we want to take that feedback, I mean, overall, there's comments that are all over the place.
That's true, but I see more that say, "No art" than I see anything other than local.
What we've distilled out of that is a preference for the improvements that we've been talking about that. If we want to switch gears and not do something, you know, we've gone through the process here to select some things. When we ask for feedback and we get, "No art," or "No art," commented with things like, "There's no dog parks in Mound," right? Like, we're not, we're not going to build a dog park here, so, so-
That's what they ask for, so why are we not building a dog park, is what I'm, the next thing. I mean, I'm not arguing with you. What I'm getting at is, we need to have a meeting with the Parks Commission, and I would like to see this tabled before we make any decisions. I am not in favor of spending tax dollars that we don't have. I know you've budgeted for it, but we have got a lot of things on this list that myself, as a taxpayer, I don't think are necessary. The city is short on funds, and we're committing two point two million dollars for an open space park and putting in things like, you know, hammock stands. People are talking to me and they're saying, "What? Have we lost our minds?"
A lot of people are talking to me and saying, "That's just wonderful."
Well-
I can't, you know, we always, we always have people on either side.
That's true, but I don't think this is physically responsible.
Taking decisions to make this a quality, livable community. People in Mound always talk about the negative connotations made towards the town. The only way you get over that is for people to then start expressing pride.
How do hammock stands for this community help?
I'm not just arguing, I'm just saying-
How does a dog park in downtown Mound help you?
I don't think we need a dog park downtown Mound. No, I said it's been a request multiple times when we pay for these surveys, and we don't listen to what the community is saying.
No, we're listening.
That was part of the twenty forty plan, even when we go back to that, there was a request. I mean, the dog parks are another topic. What I'm having an issue with is what we're spending on this open concept. You know, if we want it to be an open space and a green space, which we took away from Surfside Park, I think we should be very serious about this. I'm concerned about this bandstand area, you know, if you want to use it for concerts, it seems like it's a very small, limited area where we're going to put tables and chairs, and the rest of the space is higher up. I mean, I don't know that we're going to have good sound acoustics, we're going to be blasting music towards our Tessa, number one. I don't know how they're going to feel about that. You know, a lot of the stuff on here gets back to the same thing that we found out from the original survey that was done. I know that I participated in one before I was on council at the farmer's market. What happened to that in the recommendations that were made by those people? You know, I see another one on here that talks about a splash pad. I'm not saying we should have a splash pad, but I feel like we're ignoring what the people are asking for.
We looked into splash pads.
We've already looked into this. Again, I know you're kind of newer to this.
We as a council haven't looked, ever talked about this, and-
Well, the two of us, we've been around, and we've looked at the splash pad.
Yeah, we looked at the splash pad.
I'm not talking about splash pads.
And we looked at the dog park.
I agree that, in my opinion, you know, I love what's been done so far. I love the promenade, I love the idea of the, what, what I'm, to me, there is nothing here that distinguishes Lost Lake Commons from any park, any town USA. I mean, you could go to any town and you're going to see a park like that. There's nothing unique that says, we're, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to blast out that we're proud of Mound. You know, we need a landmark somewhere, you know, think about when you go to Rochester and you see the, the corn cob water. You go to Brainerd, you see Paul Bunyan, you go to Garrison, you see the Big Fish. We have an opportunity here-
We are working on the Tonka Troy truck. I did get the name of the people, the context, so we're working on that, that's a landmark. And people said they wanted history in the survey, and they're talking about having the panels that tell the history.
I, I'm just trying to give you my opinion. I feel like we have really missed on an opportunity to take Bruce Stillman, who is a renowned sculptor, and get him to, you know, give, give us some of his concepts so we can approve. I think, you know, if you did, I'm not in favor also of this removable art. I think it's going to be cost prohibitive. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work for our Parks people, or whoever. I think also there's going to be a real issue we have to be careful of is, who is it going to offend? You know, who are we going to pick? Who's going to, I just think there are too many elements. I'd love to see, we'll just use Bruce for an example, because we already have a lot of his art around Mound, to throw us some concepts for three fabulous pieces to put in the Art Walk that can create photo ops, that can get people excited, it's unique, it's different, it's original, it's not everyday Mound. And, and maybe it's a dump truck, maybe it's Hercules, you know, Kevin Sarble. You know, we, we're already attaching to the, to the trail, you know, Andrews. I just think we're missing out on an opportunity to really, really elevate this to something that Mound goes, "Yee-haw, that is my town, nobody has anything like this in my town." And, and I'm talking that Art Walk, I think we can re, I'd like to see that refined, I want, I, I think we're missing the mark with hammock hooks.
Can I, can I clarify, I don't mean to interrupt Councilmember McNeeny, can I clarify just one thing?
Yes.
We're talking about a combination of things, not just all rotating. And, and so when you talk about Bruce's kinetic sculptures, right?
Well, he does things other than just kinetic.
Absolutely, I guess the bulk of his art is kinetic sculptures, that's why I say that. I don't, I don't mean to oversimplify him, him and his art, but there's still space for that here. In fact, we have the four spots that I was talking about for some kind of permanent, you know, display. And so we're planning that so it works with the rest of the community pieces of this, you know, so we can do things in this area, like the farmer's market, you know, like the Christmas tree light, all of those things that we also want to hold in this space. So that way we get some say over what's the infrastructure around it, how can it be lit, here's where it goes. And then after that, as an engineer, I, I want to show up and look at some beautiful art that somebody else came up with. But we do have four places where that could be something like one of Bruce's sculptures, or four of Bruce's sculptures, whatever it is.
I mean, I just feel like this is, once again, a little bit, the, I, I don't want to run into the thing that we did at Surfside where we do the exact opposite of what people ask for, and if you actually take the time to read every single one of these comments, there, I agree with Michelle, there's, there's a lot of comments that people don't want art. I would like to, I would like to see the art unique to just Mound, where you can go to any other park and say, "I've never seen that before, that's so fabulous." And if you guys want to get inspired, and if you haven't been down to the mini putt, you know, Big Stone lately, we have a chance to make that area literally inspired and, and just literally where nobody else in the world has anything like it. Because when you drive into Mound and you go, "Oh my God, that's Mound, I'm excited, I'm proud," rather than just, all this stuff that just feels like any park in the USA, any town, any park. I want to see a landmark, I want to see something that excites everybody, and it isn't just, you know, "Ho-hum, we got hammock hooks, we got a little bit of Art Walk." That doesn't say anything about Mound.
Well, I think you're just talking about something that's, we're all on the same track, it's just scale. You want something that scales to the point that people visually see it as they're driving in versus the parking garage.
Well, I want some boardwalks.
You want, but, but you're talking about stuff that, and those comments you talked about, people didn't want the art. So, I mean, it's like, I agree with you, I like the idea of having a big piece of art that's significant. I'm also concerned that we have to be very careful about it not being offensive, and some of the discussions-
Well, I agree, but how are you going to control that with high school? You're going to say, "No mega, no pride," I mean, where are you going to draw the line with what's acceptable?
We set a criteria as a city, you know, in the art.
Flowers can't, I'm just giving you, I'm just giving you my initial thought when I look at this.
I'm listening to your thoughts, and I'm hearing them, and I don't think that they're in conflict with what we're talking about. I think that scale or size or positioning is part of your issue, because- because you want it to be something that people see and recognize and identify with. And, you know, the thing is, we also need to, you know, sometimes when I go to the farmer's market, I sit and talk with the ladies who run it and just watch. 'Cause for, before we started doing this, I used to watch, how do people go across that field? And there was an interesting pathway that kids did across that field. And actually, the promenade actually follows the pathway that they did. And so, you know, I'll give it to the engineers. They looked at it and they saw what was going on. And so, I think that we have to think about how we, how people go there, use it, and whatever. The other thing that we never talk about is, the park is not isolated. The park is connected to the Andrews Sisters Trail. It is connected to the Little League baseball field, is connected to the skate park. They're all in that region, and we need to understand that the park, there's this passive sort of event park, but there are all these other connections that are there, that make it vibrant, and where families go, and that's why, that's why the kids traverse through that field to get to the skating and to get to the baseball.
I just, I just really feel like we're really missing out on an opportunity to, to stand out and not just fit in. I don't, I don't wanna see just a little path of stuff. I want less is more, and I want the last tea in your face. I wanna be, like, when I go to Brainerd and I, my favorite thing is to see Paul Bunyan and Ox. We have nothing in Mound that we show any pride towards. I agree, tronca Troy.
We need, we need to figure what that is.
Okay, but then where do we come up with all these, like, hammock hooks? I don't agree with any of that. I also am, I gotta go down there tomorrow because I'm still a little bit confused about the seating, although I love that area. I'm not judging the area. I'm just confused.
Well, you need a place where people can sit and gather.
People want picnic tables. Where are all these people gonna sit? They just wanna go relax.
That's what their tables are for, and the seating.
Yeah, but they're all down in that area, but what about the open space?
What's the rest of that all day long? Again, we have nothing that is gonna draw people attendance on a daily basis, not one thing. We need to give them photo ops, or some reason to go, "Hey, my cousins are in town. I can't wait to see them go down and see, you know, the dump truck."
Well, have you really been over there? Because, you know, the limited promenade and the sidewalk, which would be through the art area. If you go down there, people are walking that now. It has become an extension of the Andrews Sisters Trail, or whatever.
But that's not the side of the park I'm concerned about.
So, don't say that people aren't there.
No, I didn't say that.
You said, you said you don't see crowds or whatever. You said something about people.
No, I said, I don't understand where everybody's gonna relax and chill. I just, are the...
I think in a hammock.
I think, yeah, at a table, surely will.
I'm gonna issue them to Councilmembers.
To me, it doesn't seem, are there any picnic tables at this place?
There used to be, like, two or three scattered ones.
No, I'm talking about for this version of the concept.
That's what, what he's talking about. The tables that have the accessibility.
Well, yeah, they're all gonna be down on that end.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the green space area.
Permanent installations. That part of the, and I don't mean to sound contrarian when I say this, but we have been talking about this for a while, right? This is not the first time we've all seen and talked about these things, right?
But I, as a council member, have not.
Understood. So...
And neither have I.
One of the primary things that we have heard through the process with Artesa, right? And what was, what was...
What does Artesa have to do with our park?
This was all green space before. And so, then, when that started under construction, we got a lot of feedback that was, "Where is our green space gone?" And so, that's when we decided to, or that's, not we, but that's when you all decided to dedicate this as a park, rather than build something else there.
It's absolutely fantastic.
Absolutely. But so, if we were to do permanently installed picnic tables throughout the green space, that would sort of prevent us from doing other, you know, more flexible things there.
But like, what else are people gonna do? They wanna go hang out. What, are you gonna have a band playing all day, every day? People, if you read, when you guys read all these comments, you'll be surprised at how many people go, "I just wanna have a place to chill, to relax. Where am I going to sit?" And those tables would not be my idea of comfort, to go, if you wanna just go hang out and read a book, like people used to do down there prior, when it was ugly green space. I just think we're missing a huge opportunity here to make this 100% Mound-related, related, and make people go, "God, that is so cool when I drive into Mound. Look at that," whatever we're seeing. I'm not really comfortable with the, with the, um... I'd like to see a portable fire pit. The minute you have those built-in things, they become right in the middle of your path. They're not gonna be used for six months of the year, especially during the summer. I'd rather see the removable one. You know, I just, I just feel like there's some things that we can do to make this really elevated, and really get rid of some of the fluff that I don't think is serving Mound. And I don't think the people of Mound will be excited when they come down here and go, "Oh, there's like glass walls with permanent art." I don't think people care about that. I mean, we had 180 people that took this survey. But if you go to our original, there was nothing talked about in Art Walk. There were no hammock hooks. So, I feel like, I don't know where this came from. I like a point of it, but I don't, I feel like this is truly, truly everyday USA. There's nothing that stands out to me at all. And we are missing an opportunity to not have Bruce Stillman give us, throw us some ideas.
Well, I think that we have to be careful, and Bruce Stillman is a wonderful artist and well-known, and he's from Mound. But I think that rather than getting into naming people, we need to say, "We want a quality artist, and we will look at people." But I think that you have to be careful about throwing out names.
Well, I'm throwing his name out because he offered it when he was at that meeting.
Well, he came here, and he can certainly be part of it. He can join in and be a part of it. He can compete for it. He may be selected. I'm just saying, in this formal meeting, I think it's inappropriate for us to be naming.
Well, I'm throwing it out because he offered at our joint meeting.
I know, I know why you're doing it. I'm just saying that I think it's not appropriate to say the name.
Well, again, that's neither here nor there. I'm just trying to say, I think we still have a ways to go to elevate.
And I think that you have to remember, this is phase two. This is putting in sort of basic infrastructure pieces for the park.
It's a lot of money.
Well, I know it's a lot of money, but that's developing the park so it's accessible.
But I don't, I don't think a good part of Mound is going to be excited about that side of the park.
But I guess what I was trying to say is, what you want to do, this big image thing that you're looking for, it still can be a part of this. This is only phase two, which is doing sort of infrastructure, setting down some of those things.
But Sherri, we have to look at the bigger picture.
Well, the bigger picture is, there's still a lot of land there to develop, to put your three-story monument, if that's what it's going to be.
But now, you're totally doing the opposite of what people want. They want more green space, more green space. They just wanna be able to hang. So, that whole, what's all going on in the middle of, are those all trees?
And green space.
The green space?
And green space.
Again, I think we are completely not giving Mound something cool, unique, original, and letting us shine as a unique city. I'm just not seeing it.
So, Councilmember McEnany, if, I'll remind you, I work for you, right? So, if we wanna do something different here, we will do that. But then what we, what we need is clear direction on what to take out or what to add.
And this is what we have never talked about in a group with council, to actually have everybody take the time to review all this, take the time to come with our ideas, to say, "Here's everything we love. I don't know where all this came from. How can we utilize some of it and still give us a unique feel that only is, that only Mound has?" So, I feel like we, as a council, need to sit down together. We owe it to our residents for $2.2 million that the five of us have literally never sat down and gone through this.
You're right about that because it was the previous council, of which two of us were in, that did. So, don't, you have to remember that the council changes. And so, every time, every time a new council person comes, says, "I was never part of it."
I'm not asking to be part of it.
It has been reviewed. I guess just don't say, 'cause the council hasn't reviewed it.
Sherri, Sherri, it's not about being, from the start, it's about, we, we as a responsible council now, at this stage of the game, have never sat down and reviewed this to say, "Okay, I think this works," after everybody's read the comments, and sat down together to say, "What works and what can we elevate? What can we add to make this unique to Mound?"
Okay, so, if we're gonna do that, I, once before, I said something about, as a group, we need to go to the park. We need to sit there. We need to observe. Some of us need to...
What's that gonna do?
If you're, because you're talking about making it unique and addressing, we can look at the comments, but you've gotta go and observe a space.
Well, I've been down there several times. But I also wanna look at a layout and go, "Part of this concept is working."
Well, see, now, you wanna have this conversation without putting in the context of the environment. And good design, form follows function, isn't that part of what they always said in good architecture?
I think we've all gone down to walk around the park.
Have you observed it? See, some people do and some people don't. I mean, walking in some places.
For me, Sherri, for me, that is diddly squat to how it affects that side of the park. I mean, I can visually understand. I do need to go back down there and really understand what's going on. Are you ripping out the old little dock area, I guess I'll call it, gazebo-ish area?
No.
Or is that still there somewhere?
They're resurfacing the floor.
Yeah, we just resurfaced the floor at this stage.
But is the...
Where the deck is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we're just, we're just putting in alternate to get that resurfaced.
Okay, that, I, this is where, Sherri, I agree. I have to go down there with this map to figure out that area. I'm not getting it.
If we need to stake something or help provide a visual, we'll gladly do that.
No, I don't need that. I need to understand where the current docks and stuff are. They're right, is that all them over there?
Yeah, just the ground at the bottom.
Okay, so the current, I'm gonna call it, little gazebo area that has, you know, the, kind of the false ceiling? Is that going away?
No, we're not gonna touch that.
Okay, 'cause I love that. That's really cool.
Yeah, we're just, we're just updating the flooring is all we're putting in there at the moment, so.
It's wood and it's rotting, not rotting, but it's rotten.
No, no, I understand that, but where is it in context of this area?
Down there.
Right where the laser is.
It's right there.
Oh, it's right there. Okay.
So, I just was down there yesterday when I walked around the lake, our lake, and then I did the little walk. And then, I think it was a few days before that, a week before that, something like that. It was a hot day and everybody's getting ice cream, right? And they were, as far as the picture goes, there, there's a little bench, kinda in front of, no, on the left top. Left, 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 left.
Your other left.
Down by the gazebo?
No, left, way over there. The left, not right.
Are they coming from the ice cream shop?
You mean past Artesa, don't they?
Yeah, right over there. They're right in front of our, right in that area. There's like a little bed. There's one bed, right? Not that we wanna build a park for an ice cream shop, but I'm just saying, you know, and the other thing is, they're sitting in the street, too.
Well, it's gonna be a huge bonus for the ice cream shop.
Well, for years, like, me and my kids, we would go down there. We'd take our boat, park there.
100%.
We'd go across through Promenade, right? And, you know, do the whole thing through the dandelion field.
And during construction, people were at the ice cream shop, and the kids would go up to the fence and look at the construction. So, that, that's already a pattern that's established.
So, whether this ice cream shop stays or doesn't stay, I don't wanna build a park just for an ice cream shop. But I will say, if they're down there having ice cream, or if you're stopping off your bike, and, you know, they got the sign on the top top, the Three Rivers, they got their signs of, you know, where everything is and this and that. And that's a natural place where people are gonna come in all the time and check out this park. The one thing that I noticed, and I just walked, you know, I was down Dakota, then I went down to the Promenade, and then went back around Artesa and back, you know, towards my house. And, well, first thing I noticed is the grass is horrendous, and I emailed Jesse and yelled at him a little bit. And they're working on it, right? Or you guys are working on it? Do not pay those guys until they fix it. Well, I guess we would approve it. Yeah, they haven't been paid, they haven't been paid yet. Yeah, they're not been paid yet, so, and they need...
Duly noted.
They need to fix it. It's horrendous. Remember the dandelions before? It's a little bit of an upgrade of that. So, now, I know they can't mow it because, you know...
The grass itself is very short when it is coming in.
The weeds are this.
Yeah, they had a head start.
Anyway, that's another thing. But, you know, I kinda thought, okay, do I envision myself doing anything here? Right now, again, hammocks are no hammocks. I don't really care.
What's the cost?
Would I actually go down there and sit in a hammock? I don't know. Maybe not, maybe. But I can see a lot of other people doing it and just hanging out.
Who can see doing that, going and hanging out?
A lot of young college kids hanging out. I mean, they do that in Calhoun. We're biking.
Because that's a whole different...
Can I talk or not?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll just let you talk.
Pardon me.
So, we went around Calhoun, right, and Lake Harriet, right, did the whole figure eight. There's people just hanging out all over. That's kinda how I'm visiting this area, as well as Surfside, is, you know, it's a hangout, right? They tie a thing to one tree and another, you know, they do the line, or they do a hammock thing, or they hang out. Me with a bad back, I'm not gonna sit in a picnic table for five hours, right? Now, what I would say is, we should look into more those nice, you know, plastic, you know, chairs that live forever, right? You know, those, whatever they're called, but...
Recycled PVC stuff.
Recycled PVC, whatever, yeah. And, yeah, what is that?
Adirondacks.
Yeah, like those, you know, like...
But the ones you can still get out of.
That are pretty, that are movable.
Like, let's go down there and then I wanna read my book, right? And let's have those in certain spots, and let's, 'cause again, the picnic table is not gonna work. The concrete wall, I'm not sitting on a concrete wall. I'll kill my back, right? Now, again, I'm not the, maybe the person that's gonna be doing that. But maybe some kids do it or something else, but that's not gonna be an accessible type of thing either. I don't know. I think we need to kinda go, what can we go forward on, if we wanna go forward on anything, or if we wanna just kinda revisit this? But could we look at the lights? Could we look at some of these trees? You know, can we kinda do that, maybe regroup and say, you know, the whole art thing? I couldn't care less about the art thing. I would never go to the park for art. I don't care. Now, looking at, looking at the surveys and stuff, you know, half of them want it, half don't, whatever.
It's a bigger picture, Jason.
Five out of the 55.
What I will say, though, is, remember when you did the thing for Mound and you had, and you put it up in front of your face, and you took a picture? That's what I would say, or YZ with the big chair.
Well, you could do the big Adirondacks. It could be made by an artist with the backs being taca trucks instead of just add... You know, we need photo opportunity stuff.
But I mean, what can we move forward to now? We can, we can, I always add this, chair later, right?
Actually, we have a photo opportunity location currently.
Have you got everything specked out for, you know, like, for the food trucks, which is a huge, important need?
Well, the food trucks are gonna be on the parking lot.
Right, so you're gonna, you've got all the electric going up there. And then what do you need down here for performance? We can go ahead with that, 'cause we're going to have a performance area.
Lot of plug-ins, right? And then you're gonna have that voltage.
The farmer's market's phase three.
Yeah, and I'm saying, this whole phase three, just so you guys know, like, phase one was paid for by the sale of the land, right? That's the $700,000. Phase two, we wanted to say, "Let's do something and finish this thing so we don't have just a dandelion park for another five years." So, this is why we're doing phase two. I don't know if we'll ever do phase three. I'm being honest. Let's figure out a water treatment plant first, right?
I'm cool with doing that whole seating area and the whole, whatever you're doing in phase two down there. I think we need to revisit that whole area up there. And that does, we have to talk about it because it has to do with lighting, and where you're gonna be placing all this permanent stuff. So, I do think it's important to have a bigger concept of refining this a little bit.
In the pavilion area, I did talk to the Pre-Orbs Park lady, and she does have multiple concepts for the pavilion, 'cause that one that they put up in Surfside is a joke. And what it's used for is, they're dragging the picnic tables over and putting them under there to have picnic.
It was never meant to be, I think, a big pavilion. It was, it was designed so that people could do exactly what they're doing, have a family picnic under the shelter. But when they had the band there, they're there. But it was never designed to be a...
Well, Sherri, first I wanna say this, 'cause I feel like you're really resistant to even tweaking any of this.
No, I'm, I'm open to it. You know what? I love open space. I, I mean, I've done this for, as part of my career. And there are things that I would bring to it. The one thing I thought which was sort of cool was the hammocks, and you slammed me for that, so, don't, you know...
Because there's not one person we've had conversations with that thinks that Mound wants that.
Some, sometimes you don't know what you want if you haven't seen it.
But when you have a huge expense like this, you need to start... But when you have a huge expense like this, you need to start really examining what, what works for the mound.
The hammock things can't do that much.
And look at what happens in their parks.
You're missing, you're just missing the plan.
And look at what happens in their parks.
Okay, why don't, why don't you just finish up? We should table it and revisit, but I also want to, and it had nothing to do with this. I wanna set up a workshop for us to discuss all of our parks in open spaces. We were fortunate enough to just get the reviews from, um, the Park Commission. I had to take, I had to go to every single park in open space, take photos for the website. I made copious amounts of notes. We have tons of opportunity to look at everything to say, gee, this could work better this way. We can sell this to the neighbor and this site to the neighbor. There's opportunities with a lot of green space that have nothing on it. Can we reinvent it? So I'd like to, and I, that had nothing to do with this. I wanted this since our, our combined meeting. So, and I'm kinda glad it waited because fortunately all of that, your, your reviews came in from all the commissioners.
We didn't get through all of them because there was a storm and so the meeting got interrupted. But everyone has done their reviews and, and they're all in writing and so.
So it'd be nice to compare them and I'm gonna make packets so we can all look.
The Parks Commission's been waiting. We've told them that, that the council wants to meet.
Well, we did and only two showed up.
And so we just haven't set up the meeting. They're ready to do it.
Somebody's been gone. Jason's been gone. I was gone once. Anyway, can we find a day that we can all get together and, uh, go through the packets to evaluate the parks as a group so we can be a little bit more proactive with the, the commission and give them some direction on some ideas they can start working on?
I think we should do it as a council first.
I do too. No, I agree.
Or give
They, they've had no direction from the council.
Direction on what, what we want. I mean, some of that's like, I agree, if we can get rid of or separate it. Remember the one that I didn't, I voted against it? You guys wanted-
Oh, Edgewater? That's the first one of my chopping block.
The one on the top, the one on the top of the hill. It doesn't make any sense. It's like one period.
But, but there, I'd like to see us really look at the amount of time that's spent in every park. Now, I was there a little early because I don't think all the planters were in place and I don't think the summer help has started. But you know, there's crooked poles, there's bad weed, but they look really untended, to be honest. So I would rather see where we can focus our attention on
Were you there in what, May or April?
Yeah, I was there in May.
They're, they're all looking a lot better. Matter of fact, there are new benches showing up all over the place.
Yeah, there are.
I wanna congratulate Public Works of the Parks.
But we have a lot of opportunity as a council to look at that and be, and give some direction to the planters.
Is the council gonna go and visit all the sites? Are we gonna do that?
Dock sites, aren't they?
No, they're not.
A lot of them are commons.
No.
How many are commons out of thirty?
Oh, there's a, there's, there's, there's nineteen playgrounds with playground equipment, but even a couple of those are questionable, to be honest with you. A lot of the open space, it's questionable. So I have pictures of every single thing with everything mapped out so we can review it. But if we can pick a date, that'll give everybody a chance to go visit. I, I'll have the packets out to you prior, so you can read through the notes that have been supplied and make your own notes. And we can discuss what we'd like to do because I think we can save Public Works a lot of time um, making some critical decisions that I think is really long overdue with, with regard to the parks.
Part of this is gonna be an attorney question if we can sell lots that are in between two houses. That might be easier, but some of these, it's like state rules where it's like you can all, you gotta have a park within so many. We've looked into this before, so I'm just saying, temper expectations.
Check with your engineer to make sure there isn't storms who are there too.
And so you can identify-
Well, I, I think before, because part of, in general, part of, if we have any city property that you're looking to dispose of, the first question is whether or not it's restricted or unrestricted. And you only can do that through a title search. That costs money. And so I think what needs to be done first is you need to identify which ones you wanna do as a council with direction and once we have those, then the question, then comes a question of how does the city hold that property? And that's before we see if there's any other restrictions that are with, there with, without doing it. But we need to do some form of a title search. Those at a minimum will cost, uh, they're ninety, at a minimum ninety dollars. They go up to ninety and a hundred and eighty. But I've seen them around ninety right now. I've done, I've done a few. So that's the fir-, so before, I, I, it's kind of, I wouldn't put the resources into my review until we know what you wanna do.
I agree, a hundred, that's why we need to know.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, that, that's really good to know.
Yeah.
But you know, some of these could be maybe a community garden, some maybe could be a dock park. I, I see a lot of opportunity to embellish the really, I guess, the most, I'm gonna call them beautiful parks with playgrounds.
We have three parks which are large parks, Surfside, Philbrook. I guess maybe Three Points might, and Highland, so there might be four. Those are the four largest parks. The rest of the parks are, tend to be basically one or two lots, less than an acre.
Well, there's one, there's one green space.
More than fifty percent have play structures. Play structures are only good for children up to ten years of age.
Ten?
Okay, yeah, after ten, they don't wanna do playgrounds.
Oh, they don't go after five?
Yeah, well, probably.
They're on their phones at six, right?
They're on the phone, I guess, yeah, get on the internet.
Well, that Dundee Park in between two houses, I mean, what is that and where, why is it there? You know, we have some, we have some questionable areas that, that we should discuss some of the names that, I don't know where the names came from.
Well, the names came from either people's properties.
No, no, Sherri, that's not what I'm talking about.
I mean, they came from a lot of different things.
Sherri, what I'm talking about is the way we have them named on our map that we send people to on our website, you know, to get a map. You know, like, they call it, I don't know where these names came from, like, we, we don't have a park that's called, oh, I, I don't have my perks with me. Here, yes, I do. Here, here, I do. I have my actual notes that I wrote the stuff, but
That's a list I created, so I don't know.
Here, here it is, right here. Okay, so, for example, um, Lost Lake, Lost Lake Shore. We have a Lost Lake Park and then we have a Lost Lake Shore that goes all the way out. But again, these need to be re-identified. There, there's a lot missing and then there's a lot of things called shore that aren't called shore anywhere else, so we need to cross-reference these names. Cuz somebody I think just came up with these, you know, like Twin Park. There is no Highland and Shore. It's always been called Twin Parks. You know, the one that goes, you can drop your jet skis in that little ramp and then it goes up. So I just, there's a lot to review that we can tidy up. So, okay.
I, I would agree. I, I think that
Can we pick a day that would work?
We need to look at the full process, you know, you need to look at all the sites. You need to look at the cost and the ramifications and locations and stuff like that. But, you know, is, are we as a council committed to going to all those sites?
Well, I've been to all the sites.
You've been to all the sites, but everyone else has to go to those sites too.
I've started going to them, so.
I've been out to all the houses.
I mean, otherwise
You'll be surprised when you get to somebody's site.
I mean, I've been, I've been to the sites.
You'll go back and qualify as a green space.
You've walked over the whole town too.
I'm sorry, I missed, I couldn't hear.
But yeah, that would be like a workshop thing and then separately, maybe like the, like the order of events or like figuring out which parks
Correct.
are what or can be, you know, but that would just probably be a workshop or an agenda item. I don't know what's best.
That's what I'm asking for a workshop. We
And you're right that there are strange names because I went to, um, what is it? What is it? Cedar View? Clear, Clearview, Clearview Park to meet some friends from the city and they knew it. On their map, it said the Minnetoga Fishing Pier. The Fishing Pier.
Oh, right, right.
And, and I went, Minnetoga Fishing Pier, where are you down at?
Oh, Centerville Beach.
I said, no, that's this park and
Dune's the same way it's spelled.
So, I guess the question is, so we can keep moving on, can we find, should we find a date tonight that we can have?
A workshop?
A workshop?
I mean, you can call for a workshop, of course, but like what, um, what need to happen before that? Like, we wanna, does it take some time to gather the
I already have all the packet put together. I, I, I already had all the pictures. I have my notes. We have the notes from the, uh, Parks Commission. We can get you the packets. You can look at it all visually on each page and then you can go, oh, okay, now I see where it is, where it looks like. I'm gonna go over and see it in person. You can read all the notes and then we can come together, excuse me, as a group and make some assessments.
You're talking like city council workshop, not parks and?
No, I'm talking just city council. We owe it to the parks for us to get together and re- review this so we can give them some direction. I can't believe for years they've had, they just, it's like pie in the sky. They just do what they've gotta do without
They do do that and they each get so many parks and they come back and that's what they're doing, but
Oh, I know that.
The difference is you or me or, you know, we might have a different view of, they're parks people. They'll, well, this is the parks, they're good, whatever.
These are people who like parks and, and they go to the parks.
We might say, well, why do we even have that one? Cuz that could be south, you know, or should we reposition it to a dog park or, you know.
Well, and that's what you're, but that's why we have combined notes. So, so we can all look at this and as a fiscally responsible group, we need to go, gee, I mean, how much time does Ryan and the boys actually spend working at these parks?
Dustin is working on that cuz I did ask him to do that.
And, and some of them, you would not direct anybody to. You just wouldn't.
Yeah.
But they're, but they're on our map. They're on this map that, you know, you go to the website and it's like, I would never direct anybody.
So why, why don't we come up with a date that could work? But that's secondary.
We've turned this conversation to going to the parks. We haven't dealt with what these gentlemen are here to do with us tonight.
Yeah, so let's, maybe at the end of the meeting, we'll look at our calendars if we can.
What are we gonna do about this phase two?
Going back to this though, wh- what if, what if we do just like the, like the lights are gonna be the lights. They're not, we're gonna put a light in the middle of the grass, in the middle of the thing, right? So we should be able to look at the lights and figure that out, right? I mean, that should be a norm, an engineer thing, right?
Yeah, sorry, Jesse, go back.
Yeah, if we're on
My apologies.
They do kinda need to be spaced out depending on where the arts and all that stuff goes on that south side, but we can do for sure the Promenade and the north side without having the rest of, without having it all figured out, so.
But would it make more sense to do it all at once?
Yeah, yeah, having one electrician out there, making sure that all that power is figured out at the same time.
So then we shouldn't do it.
So, so from an engineering standpoint, I, I understand that there are some very specific things that we may or may not wanna change or we, we want included or maybe we want excluded. The bulk of the costs have to do more with infrastructure. You know, we're putting in some pervious surface with the sidewalk. We have to do some, you know, ponding and rain garden type things. So the, so the, the features, the appurtenances, the amenities, you know, the, yes or no to hammock posts? Uh, yes or no to, to picnic tables? You know, it makes sense through the process of city procurement and with our landscape architects and the crew that's been working on this for us to show you options and pick some and put them in with this. But, but if, if for some reason we said, we don't know what we want for picnic tables, maybe we want portable ones? We can still put in the pavement. It just means that after the fact, then they won't be permanent. They'll be, you know, sitting on top of that. I shouldn't say pavement, it's concrete and it's very decorative concrete, but, uh, you know. So this is more infrastructure to try to bring you to hopefully what should be a blank slate for some of those other things. And then based on the feedback we've gotten and the planning that has happened, you know, the art walk, the pieces of art, just the stands for the art or the concrete bases. Those are planning for that stuff. If those are things that you wanna take out, by all means, that can be done. But the bulk of this is infrastructure to support the area, mobility around the area, you know, access to it and to try and get away from what used to be Auditor's Road, right, and make it more of a park. So in terms of dollars, the bulk of the discussion has had to do with the very small pieces that are in this plan. And what we're, we're cost estimating for you tonight is infrastructure, not some of those things that make or break the park from what I'm hearing.
So within this seven hundred eighty-one four, that's only the infrastructure.
It's, it's not only the infrastructure. I'm saying the bulk of the dollars and that are infrastructure.
But you don't have, okay, this is so much money for, I just don't think, uh, I, I just don't think it's gonna, gonna be a hundred percent what, what Mound desires. That, that's all I'm saying. It, it's so much money.
And, and we don't presume to know that on your behalf. It's part of what the engagement is about. Granted, you have to read the comments sometimes with a grain of salt and, and I honestly think some of the more ridiculous ones, I'm not gonna read out loud up here, you know, but stop building parks and treat my water. Yeah, we're working on it, right? But the fact that those
But when you, when you really read thoughtfully every single comment, and I did, you get a, a, a big picture of just who Mound is. And, and this is only a hundred eighty people. At our last community engagement, we had, what, eight hundred and fifty people? So this is a very small percentage. And when, when we sent this out on Facebook, let's be honest, it was kinda leading questions. We will have an art walk. What, you know, I mean, it's like, oh, okay, I don't know if I want an art walk. Some of people did actually say things like that.
That was purposeful because, because of all of, you know, trying to respect all of the decision-making and the engagement that had come before was, you know, we've been told, this is what we're gonna do here. We're asking, do you want, you know, a gas fireplace or wood fireplace? Those, those kinda things. We were, we were seeking the input on, on how the public is gonna interact with this. The fact that we got comments on things like Mound doesn't have a dog park, I think, I think, I view that positively because that means that people engaged and then they said, well, you're asking me this question, but then you gave me a box to type in, I have something else to say? So for me, I, we, Matt and I have a specific set of marching orders that is to deliver this. If you all wanna take those comments and say, you know, out of the sixty respondents, three mentioned a dock park. If, if that's a directive for something else to happen, you know, by all means, but I don't know that that's a thing we're gonna do here and I don't know that that changes our path forward significantly here, right? No, 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 I know, I know.
I'm just saying, with an open mind, read every comment. I think you will be surprised to find out. Grass, 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 open space, open space, open space, place to chill, picnic tables or places to sit.
That kinda looks like what it is. That's exactly what it is.
Well, but you know, here's the other thing. Excelsior has a music place. I've been down to one of their events. First of all, we're gonna put the band down lower than the rest of the crowd, which seems counterintuitive because the people back here aren't gonna be able to see the band. You know, their thing is raised up and everybody brings their own chairs. You know, I mean, are we gonna permanently attach those tables and chairs down there in that area?
I, I believe, I believe those, those tables are
I mean, if we're asking for beds, we should be specific.
But I believe they can be moved. They're not gonna, they're not gonna be bolted in.
And then we've got, we've got umbrellas obstructing views. I mean, I would think, you know, for a wheelchair, is that even accessible? I mean, it seems like that whole area would be more open and maybe we would spend more time coming up with perimeter areas where we would put picnic tables or these concrete things cuz I get the wind and all that other stuff. Um, I just don't think that this has been totally thought through, um, from the standpoint of the city council. That bothers me. The expenditure bothers me. I still think we have a lot of questions, which I definitely feel like we need to have a meeting to discuss.
And full disclosure, there is no resolution with this tonight
Yep.
because we are not asking for anything tonight other than feedback. So, so even, even if y'all feel like this has been contentious, right? This is exactly what we were here for, is to prompt the discussion. Uh, the intent is to come back in July with, you know, that's why we shared the ninety-five percent plans, but the intent is to come back in July and ask for permission to bid. If there are changes to be made between now and then, that is where I will go back to. I work for you. You have to give me specific direction. You know, we've brought our landscape architecture and design might to bear on this, but also we don't presume to know what is best. So we need specific direction on what to include, how to evolve, if that's where we wanna head.
So what happened to the original survey that we did a couple of years ago that I participated in at the farmer's market?
That's how this got to this.
It's how we got to this.
They got to this. Remember there were like four different phases?
Everybody wants, there's five people want to spot that. We, we, we vetted that out cuz it's too expensive.
Or per, which I still say, there's nothing here that's gonna bring a daily audience. Nothing. At, at this point.
It's gonna bring what?
Other than the ice cream.
A daily audience. For two point two million dollars, I wanna see it used every single day. And there's no, nothing that's gonna be exciting to, to bring an active audience there every day.
So I'm obviously not gonna take a picture of the same sculptural thing every day either, so what would bring them to come every day?
A playground.
Okay.
Honestly, I think too-
For who, for ten, five-year-olds? That's gonna bring, that's gonna bring?
Yeah. When, I, the last four weeks, when there's kids down there at the surf site, you know, they're all young kids. But it's bringing people to downtown Mound. We need downtown Mound. Why not bring them? We need, we need more reason to support our businesses. And yes, I, but I've said this all along. It needs some kind of a place structure or something up there by the corner to bring daily attendance.
And yet, and yet you're also saying that we have too many parks or play structures and we need to get rid of some of them potentially.
Part of the analysis.
See, cause you're, you're speaking two sides of things sometimes.
No, no, I'm not. I'm saying we need to evaluate all of our parks. I'm saying this park for two point two million dollars has nothing that is gonna bring people a, a daily audience down here. May- maybe it's a splash pad. Maybe it's a playground. I, I'm, I'm just saying, what is it? What is gonna, what's gonna bring people here every day?
I will tell you, a splash pad would bring people in the summer. Hundred percent. I drive by them every single day and why is that a?
Absolutely. And, and Waconia and Delano.
You, you drive by them too, right? There's kids all the time.
Yeah, after work, yeah.
Now, what if, what if we look at that again? I mean, we vetted out a couple of years ago, but maybe we do a basic splash pad thing or, you know. Now, that's only in the summer. What about the winter, right?
Why do we need to have anything going on in the winter? What park has stuff going on in the winter? We live in-
Well, you want something that's gonna bring people to Mound. You don't want them just to be five months in the year.
Splash pad is gonna bring them to Mound. It's gonna bring the ice cream.
In the summer.
Why not bring them in the winter too?
Huh?
Why wouldn't you wanna bring them in the winter?
Well, I just don't know.
Is it too late to add a splash pad?
Never too late.
You know, we were gonna do skating and you said no skating.
I don't know why we have to work so hard at worrying about the winter. It's just winter. It's three months a year. It's winter.
I want you to splash pad.
So nobody goes to any park in the winter.
Like even like, what was that? It's just like a little?
Yeah, they do. And Maple Grove.
Okay, splash pad is out.
Well, how much did he say?
Yeah, and you took a million dollars for a little. I did talk to them in Delano and they are, it's a, it's kind of a scheduling nightmare. You know, in order to, when it's open, taking birthday parties and, and, and the, uh, it can get pretty-
Gross.
Code brown?
Yeah, code brown.
I was saying gross.
Code brown. I, I'm just saying, you guys, we gotta open our brains and go, what can we do here that is totally cool, totally just in Mound that will bring a daily audience?
So I agree with that too. And just for, you know, if you want more feedback.
Feedback away.
Um, like to your credit before, you're like, you know, this isn't the first time we've talked about it. We've seen the plans again and again, but it doesn't mean that we can't vary and change it and whatever.
Never too late.
Man, you have said on two occasions, when we go, wait a minute, what's that? And you go, this, nothing's decided yet. So I go along going, oh, I guess the day that we need to decide it, we'll be able to discuss it, which I guess we're doing today. Well, I don't like some of it.
Well, this is like- In various spots. I mean, I kinda agree with what you had said earlier, that less is more. Like I think we can meet residents' expectations and people will hang out in just an open green space. Like look at the commons.
I agree. I think so.
And it's like, what's the, you know, crawl before you walk, walk before you run. Like I would say, if we don't do art, it doesn't mean that it can never happen.
Sherry. It may bring five people down every day. I'm talking to Sherry.
Maybe not right now. Like I would rather have green space with the lighting done. The, what's the upper left extended concrete?
You, you mean the, the structure? Pavilion?
What's the name of the? Upper left, sorry. Yeah. Like getting that done, getting the electrical done. You know, getting the trees in and having the green space and maybe a couple picnic tables out.
The pavilion?
Yep, yep.
And I think less is more and people will come hang out because they just wanna come hang out. I mean, that's what I did in Excelsior. I mean, it was like every day you just went to the commons and you just hung out cause it was open space with a frisbee and a picnic table.
Right.
And somewhere to park.
Kind of like a college campus where everybody is down.
And somewhere to park. I'm not saying, you know, unpopular comment, but like, you know, whether the art happens right away or doesn't, I don't think it matters. And the hammock thing, if it happens later, like if we have this full budget, we can come and wait under. We don't have to spend it all. It can still happen. But we can, we can postpone and pick it apart and, you know, probably not add a splash pad later, but.
Can I, can I? Can I add some context?
Yeah.
What I mentioned before about infrastructure, things that I consider sort of hard limits, amount of impervious surface, right? So total walkway, whether we change it, put it in as is and then work around it.
Yeah. Hmm.
Like that, that's sort of one of the non-negotiables, right? And once we put in stormwater treatment, that's for a specific size. So if we said we wanna come back and pave the whole thing smooth and black, not happening unless we spend a bunch of money. Uh, electrical, underground, the placement of the lights, that is very disruptive if we move or change those things after the fact. And by disruptive, I mean expensive.
Oh yeah, I'm saying we all want lights. We all want that to be-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So concrete basis for art. Pretty flexible. If you want the art to be lit, starts to be less flexible, right? We can plan for some of those things, but the electrical and the lighting gets to be a, an infrastructure dependency. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm leaning, you know, my opinion or feedback is like the less is more thing. I mean, uh, to what council member Herrick said before too. It's like, we just had a budget workshop and we have a lot going on on our priorities list that we're not getting to. This park would look great and I think residents would love it, whether it has art or not. And maybe we should take care of some bigger things first and get this park done and looking great. I don't know that we need to have everything that's in the design list, you know? Cause we did just nail down like three other things that we wanna look at and do financially that, you know, are, are more needs than, than wants. So I don't know. That's just my opinion. I mean, it looks great, but I think we should just focus on the, the fundamental stuff and worry about some other things later. I know it can get-
So we're gonna have to put lighting along that walkway anyway, aren't we?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Right. So can we not run conduit underneath it just in preparation, knowing that at some point we might wanna tap into it and run electrical for whatever?
If we run conduit without bases, we run the risk of having stuff in the wrong place and incurring costs later. I just say that as a caveat, not as a no.
Right.
I think, what, we, we put in a bunch of conduit in phase one, but-
So it's already in there?
Some, some would be in there.
Yeah, so it's along the other spot already too on the last, right?
I'd have to go back and look at the plans exactly where we have it. We, we put in all the irrigation. We put in the conduits so that in this phase, we're hopefully disturbing as little as possible. Um, besides, but obviously there's a bunch of landscaping here and where all of those bases go exactly, you know, they're gonna have to cut into the conduit in those places.
So you've already done that then?
Yeah, but, but that, that part is fairly cheap compared to the, the wiring that needs to go in and, and all that, that. So the lines are generally there, but where they gotta break them.
Right, you'd still have to pull conduit through it, or I mean, lines through it, sorry.
Empty plastic conduit is cheap. Completed circuits are not.
Exactly. Right. Which is kind of like I did under my sidewalk. You know, I knew that. We put a conduit under there and then eventually we'll fish line through it.
I guess the last thing I just would be wanna chime in about is I know like, like things could get more expensive later, you know, when you're re-digging up and redoing it. But, you know, like you said, every city or town has this park, you know, but there's kind of like a reason for that. Like it's, I don't wanna say it's nothing special, but it's like, it's a very simple, just open hangout area. I don't know that it means everything, you know?
Less is more.
Less is more, but it looks beautiful.
All I'm suggesting is an element that is literally only Mound.
I agree. And I'm saying like, you know, it's like, you know, crawl first or just start slow and like maybe take more time to assess what you really wanna do.
Well, I'm all over your, I agree a hundred percent. Putting a, putting a pin in it and putting this on pause while we can-
Parts of it. Like we want, like we all want, we want the lights, the lighting and the sidewalk and the, and the grass and all that.
The gas for the fireplace is another infrastructure dependency. If you're, if you're gonna have a gas fireplace, it's gotta go in before the concrete.
Yeah. Raise your hand if you wanna, my hand's not up. Okay.
I want a movable.
Yeah, we want a movable.
I don't think the fire chief will let us do that, especially not with, not with natural gas.
In other words, we're gonna bring one in and at the Santa, Santa deal and then we're, I don't think we need one year round. I don't.
I don't either. But, but I love the seating, like theme around what would be a fire pit. I, I like that whole area up there.
Is that, is that feedback that you like the pattern in the concrete and the rest of it can go? Is that kinda?
I just like that area really well.
Now, with, with the pattern, can you zoom in, Jesse, on that?
I don't know how accurate that is.
Is that like pea gravel in between or anything or?
What?
What is that?
Is that exposed aggregate or just a different color?
Stones or the slabs? Yeah, I just wanna make sure that that's solid.
Yeah.
It's solid.
Yeah, just a hatch for our, it's going to basically flip what's on the promenade so that the colored patterns are gonna flip.
I would expect that would be where the, the egg lines would occur.
Oh, from what the promenade is. Okay.
Promenade's got tan strips in there with the, with the browner stamped piece. So this is gonna be brown strips with the, with tan stamped.
So we could do some kinda plaza like that by some chairs that are comfortable and that brings people over from the ice cream shop or off the trail, off your bike.
That would be fabulous.
So we, we all agree that that part is okay to go potentially forward on.
Correct.
Okay, so that's one.
Can I ask one more comment? I talked, when I talked to Public Works, that, right there along the Dakota Trail, I think they own a strip of that.
Yeah.
But could we inquire and see if maybe they could give us some bike racks there?
It's like ten feet, isn't it?
Quite. I mean, I think a bike thing would, you know, there's all these bikes out there on the trail. I mean, it'd be nice if some were there.
There are two places too, on the other end, up by the ice cream shop. There needs to be bike racks up there.
We could work with three rivers.
Isn't there something right there by the restroom?
There is.
And isn't there one of those, the, the little, I broke, I broke my bike station?
Bike fix.
It's, it's tied to-
The not wandering away tools on its other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we talking about the fire pit or no?
So no fire pit.
I, I would say no fire pit.
It'll save us quite a bit of infrastructure too.
But, but let's, let's talk a little bit about if we have an event like tree lighting, we can maybe have one made, a really big cool one like the Minutrista ones and bring it in.
Right.
Get a fire, get our fire chief to say okay.
So I guess that's what I was kinda saying before.
We brought six of them in last year. We'll do that again.
And that was so cool.
But if you had a big one for homecoming, the high school could come and have its big, uh, whatever you go that night. Or they, or do they do that anymore?
That's what I'm saying. Do they even do that anymore?
They burn pallets up at the, after the football game.
Is that what they do?
So I guess that's what I was kinda saying though, the feedback. It's like, y'all want the plaza and the pavilion thing, but like, maybe we don't need a fire pit yet. We don't need art.
Okay, so we like, we like that.
You like the pattern, you like the pattern in the concrete, but no fireplace?
Yeah. So can you come back with that? Now, what about?
Keep it the circle?
Well, we have to, right? Cause that's the water basin.
That's the runoff thing, isn't it?
You have the wrong circle. You, you circled the wrong circle. Yes, keep the pattern in the concrete.
What is?
Keep that pattern there.
It's just a pattern?
It's a, it's an octagon.
Why would we keep the?
But we're not gonna have a fire pit.
I would just say take it out.
Yeah, I would say no pattern.
If you don't wanna have a place that's like, oh, this is where we put the fire pit, then we just run the pattern all the way through there.
Correct.
Yeah.
You would, this, this is for some intents and purposes a blank slate. So if you would like it to be even more blank there and put something portable, by all means, that's the feedback we're looking for.
The only-
That's pretty.
See if you guys agree with this. The, the blunt squareness, can you not be so square or maybe round that corner to that, yeah, to go down to the left?
As an engineer, I'm mildly offended.
No, like more down towards that bush.
You're gonna have to give that feedback directly to the landscape architect. You want it to curve?
Yeah, we, well, just like, I like the bottom part, but I don't like the, the top part just seems so square up there.
Well, the top part is where the signage is. So it doesn't look so hard.
Yeah.
Doesn't that connect directly to the trail there? Is that what you're talking about?
No, so come down, come down on the right corner.
Just softening the corners and giving it a little personality.
And then just kinda come back to the promenade slowly. Yeah, like that. Something like that. You know what I'm saying? And you might have to move it up a little bit and take a little space away or something.
I mean, what's, what's-
What about the historic, doesn't it, there is a slight, yeah.
The interpretive signs.
Yeah, cause the signs are up there.
So we put all the gravel in here for this, for this shape. So that's kinda why it looks the way it does right now.
Oh, you're, oh. Can you move some of it over?
And I think if we-
We can put in more.
If we arc this, it's gonna make this part kinda maybe not look real, maybe not jive real much there, but I can, uh, we can look that over.
I'm just saying make it a little less hardcore. I, I don't know. That's just a thought. And then that, where that basin is there, are we okay as council to have those trees or bushes, whatever those are?
I think if we can hide it, all the better.
Okay, so, so let's keep, keep those. And then if we go down those, along the promenade, we're gonna keep those trees, right? And then the lighting of, you're gonna light that, right? Okay, and then go down.
Lights, right?
What about the native planting?
Hi.
Well, where's that?
So the plants are kinda interspersed all over. Like e- even this darker green, that's a bunch of plant, that's a bunch of plant in there. And then there's lots of plants in here with them there.
Let's, we're on a, we're on a roll here. So let's, on the bottom here, what about these, did you say you like those picnic tables or no?
No, I don't like them. I don't, I don't like permanent stuff in a flowy park.
Okay.
I, I think we, I think we established they're semi, they're heavy.
They're heavy, but they can be moved.
It can be removed if, if you still want.
Yeah, I think in the ninety-five percent lands, there's a sketch of what they look like.
I think we need to be, is there an example where we could see these tables?
I know we have, I know we have something.
Yeah, and-
Well-
And that's something we can bid as an alternate? That's something we can bid as an alternate. If it's, if we don't like the price or we don't like the final result, we can, when we come back with the final, we can take them out.
Yeah, like there should be tables there for someone to sit, but we can always look at what they look like and change it up later.
Yeah, I mean, if you're having a concert, people aren't gonna wanna be, that's gonna take up a lot of space to have an round top and all those chairs around there. So we're gonna have a limited amount of seating directly where the band is, rather than having chairs that people could bring in and sit.
And it, it's an incline, so it's gonna be a view destructor.
It's awkward.
Have, have you all been to Staring Lake in Eden Prairie?
Yeah, it's like an amphitheater.
Yeah, and that, that slopes down not quite as gently.
It's good the way it's laid out. It's so you'll be able to hear everything.
That, that was a little bit what was being channeled here and then imagine the lake is behind the band, right?
What is the name of it?
Lost Lake. Staring Lake Park?
It's right off of Flying Cloud Drive.
Oh.
You only know that cause it's a frisbee golf course.
So on these native plants, I, uh, I kinda have a little bit of an issue with that because I don't think we need more work for Public Works. I would like to see very simplified plantings that are easy to maintain.
The natives are meant to be burned every couple of years. They don't need to be mowed, don't need to be maintained.
Burned?
Yep. You have to burn them, some of them to get them to seed. We do, we do this already in a couple of the parks where we don't have to touch it. We don't have to mow it. Every couple of years they get, they burn the plants back.
That's not the maintenance I'm talking about.
Does it look manicured or does it just look like a big fat mass?
It, it looks manicured.
Yeah, this will be manicured. The plants that are picked are like, uh, you're, I'm going off the top of my head, but like you Black Eyed Susans and stuff like that. They look nice and they're native to Minnesota.
Like the Vikings did something similar to that, I think, of what you're talking about. They did a Black Eyed Susans and they did some native grasses and it looks very organized. The stuff down by Surfside that we did that on against the road is now full of weeds and it looks awful.
Oh, it's just so awful.
I mean, there's what I would call a to- a tobacco plant growing out of the side of it. I mean, it's just-
And then it's a leg breaker.
Yeah, that's true. It is. And I mean, then we are asking Public Works to take care of that.
And they're already taxed.
They are beyond taxed.
What, where are we talking about?
Okay, so where, where are we at now?
Native plants versus landscaping.
Native plants versus-
Where are the native plants gonna go? Just that little section right there?
The, they're kinda interspersed, but most, like most of the bushes and most of the trees are, were chosen as native.
Why are you against native plants?
Minnesota.
It's not that I'm against native plants. I'm against the wild weed effect that we got going in some of these other parks. They look bad. They're hard for our teams to maintain. I mean, Public Works is fighting a weed battle non-stop. Look at Veterans Plaza. We've got weeds growing out and trees, scrub trees popping out. There are weeds so infested in the middle of the road down through there that they don't even have time to get to them. We look sloppy. It's bad. I mean, if they're just gonna put in Black Eyed Susans and some, you know, some grasses, Viking, the Vikings campus did a great job at this, but they've got tons of money. So, I mean, I want it simple, organized, so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers additional money and the Public Works group can handle it and deal with it. I mean, burning it? We're not gonna wanna be burning a fire next to Artesa so we can burn the weeds down and then we got trees and we're-
But that's just more maintenance.
Yeah, it's just, it's just too much work.
There, there's-
What happened to the concept of something that's spectacular that people would come to see?
A fire in the park? Yeah, they would all come to see that.
It's, it's still landscaped. It's still supposed to be nice. The Public Works has waited. They like the rock mulch much better than the wood mulch, so that will help hopefully with some of the weeds there.
That'll help with the maintenance, sure.
So maybe we can work with them a little bit and just review the, the number of plants that would go in there or, or sizing some of it. I think we would still probably lean towards some kinda landscaping in this, even if it just ends up being rock mulch here. This, I think we're, we'll tackle this last.
Okay.
Well, let's stay down here. So that whole concrete area is gonna be the same as the square up there, right?
Yeah, so focus on- Yes.
Like the, the same block?
Yep.
And that's gonna flow all the way down to where that tree is down there to the left down?
So, so this is gonna be different. So this is gonna be stamped and, uh, with ribbons in there.
Yep.
This is gonna be smooth and that was a request from the Public Works guys, cause they've come through with a little bit different equipment as they're coming through there to plow.
Okay. Okay. And then that ties into the wooden planks that goes out to, and that's staying for now.
Yep.
We're proposing to replace the decking.
Oh, you are right now?
Sorry.
Oh, to be like- Oh, to be like, uh, Hardy War, or maintenance, oh, yeah, that'd be good.
But it's maintaining its current shape.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no changes other than just swapping out the materials.
And, and it's, and there is an alternate specifically in case we don't like the dollar mount, we could say no thanks.
Yeah, I'm sure that's gonna be expensive.
I wanna be clear, I'm not against native plants, that's not it. I'm against the messy, I mean, like I've had Edgewater, God loving Tyler's been working his butt off, but we still have this.
Well, I would like us to have an image of being environmentally conscious in our decision making.
Black Eyed Susans are environmentally conscious.
And grass.
And they multiply.
Do something maintenance free that looks nice.
Yeah.
Good? Okay, and then what about, then we're to the trees on the right side then, right? Can't we just do trees kinda like we do on the left side for now? And then come back later and do whatever else we wanna do, our walk or?
I mean, it mostly is, right, isn't it just the four?
And we took out.
Trees and then the six smaller things kinda on the right side?
Yeah, so I'm saying like, let's keep the six, right? One, two, three, four, yeah.
Matt, is this the presentation to the?
Keep those, but then all that other stuff, we just scrap for now, until we come.
Recompute.
You know, phase three.
I think it would be worthwhile to share the Parks Commission presentation because there are some dollar ranges for some of these things.
Is there electrical?
And, as well as the couple of options that were looked at initially.
Well, they're gonna put it in.
Rock. What it, what's that straight, are you gonna put around the sign?
Yeah.
The, the main sign, is it gonna be plants or is it gonna be rock or?
Landscaping.
Landscape.
I don't know, Matt, you, maybe you have some details on exactly what the landscaping is? I know there's a picture in here somewhere, but I don't know that that reflects what's, exactly what's currently designed. And sorry, I'm flipping on my iPad here.
While he's doing that, what do you guys think about the trees in the middle?
Matt's gonna pull it up.
I mean, it's fine.
No, they want green space.
I mean, people wanted shade, right?
Yeah, we need shade.
Yeah, so that's why some of those trees were added in there.
So the, the big trees right in the middle, do we like that?
Are we gonna do the Christmas tree?
The Christmas tree's over in Veteran Plaza.
Well, the one, the one that's there is smaller, and I'm thinking we should have one prominent in the park that could grow to be a big tree.
Just remember with Surfside, all the comments where they wanted the trees gone so they weren't interrupted with their open green space. So I think we need to be really careful at the placement of those to create the shade.
So that they're more on the east side?
Yeah, that thing.
And, well, this'll take years, but once it's big enough, that could create some shade.
It's gonna take quite a few years to create shade.
Absolutely.
I'm guessing we're not putting immature trees, we're putting.
No.
Did you just tell me to keep it cheap?
Yeah, I did.
Well, you're not gonna buy.
It's gonna be a few years.
You got it.
It's not gonna be a teensy little twig, is it? For those.
Then, we typically get two and a half inch thick.
How long is that gonna take?
Depends on the tree species.
What kind of trees are you getting?
We gotta get good trees.
Not in time for the photo op, let's just put it down.
So I got the ninety-five percent plan to remove, uh, actually, there's a good chance of, here's kinda roughly what those tables look like.
There we go.
Can you zoom in on that?
So they're attached and you can't really move the chairs around?
The chairs swivel.
Yeah, this is our proposed.
Yeah.
And I can.
I think that's so confining.
I, I don't like the idea of making that, that, yeah.
So if we're talking about making things lower maintenance for the park staff, something that is.
Attached to house.
Permanent, they don't have to handle, worry about stealing, replacing, like.
Well, are there any benches that are ADA? I mean, most people are gonna bring their own chairs.
Not necessarily.
Can we add cameras down there, by the way?
If you want.
I mean, I guess that's.
That's a lot of money.
It's not gonna be that much money compared to what, I mean, my god, I can buy a camera right now for thirty-nine bucks.
So I guess.
It's got AI.
So I, I guess, I agree, I, I don't, I'm not a big fan of these bench table things. I've got, there's gotta be other designs. Actually, I think I, I get the.
I think we need to get benches that have arms.
Oh, here, right here.
Send them packing.
Oh, actually, th- those are, those are the benches that are kind of appearing. Haven't you seen, we've got these new benches in town?
These?
They look kinda like that.
Yeah, those are not things we, we would need to include in this part of it, so that.
Okay, well.
They're along the street, stuff.
Even something like that would be better. I don't know, I'm just saying that looks, I agree, it's, looks restrictive, I don't know, it does look nice.
But it's.
Okay.
What's that green thing? Is that, that's the?
We were planning for some Adirondack chairs.
Yeah.
To be used around the fire pit.
Yeah. Well, we could do that without a fire pit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
We'll just set them up.
Just have the chairs, yeah.
Yeah.
The Adirondack chairs are not accessible for people with mobility issues. So, you know, just don't plan on an abundance of them because people with mobility can't get out of them very easily because the seat sits down.
Sherry, my chubby butt can't get out of them very easily.
The way, the way you're sitting.
I love a few different kinds.
What about benches around that area, you know, with the arms, like comfortable benches?
Yeah, benches with arms would be good.
Cause that works for elderly people to sit on.
In, in Northfield, they have, they have a shed in their, uh, park. And they have chairs in there, they're, they, they, they did it for the older members, they have red chairs. And they pull the red chairs out for concerts. And those red chairs, everyone knows are for the older members in the community. So then they don't have to worry about bringing their own chair to the park.
Yeah.
So that would be another thing to think about, you know.
This green chair isn't in the design now, right?
It, it was roughly shown around the fire pit.
But we, we didn't put it in your final quote thing.
It, it can be in there, I think we had it as a, as an alternate, uh, as one of those other things, it's pretty, it's gonna be pretty.
It's not wood, it's actually the maintenance free rubber.
Powder coated. Powder coated metal.
You know what I'm talking about, like the plastic stuff that just never.
By, by the yard?
Yeah, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Is it like that?
No, this is powder coated metal, this is, this is a little more permanent than that.
It's gonna rust?
Uh, powder coated shouldn't unless it gets, the powder coating gets damaged.
Is this gonna be nice to say that? Like, feel good?
It should be.
Versus the plastic stuff, is it different?
Plastic stuff would probably be a little bit more forgiving, but I, I think it's, it's a preferential thing, I wouldn't argue one way or the other. I would ask, what, what would you like?
Well, I'd like the plastic one that, and I'd like not green. Maybe brown or something.
I don't think we're focused on the color.
But I mean.
It actually says black there.
Well, and now we're spending money, what if we put a logo on each of them? You know, the mound logo on the back, like do blue or, you know, again, then it brings into our, our city.
Yeah.
Hey, this is Mounds Park, it's a blue chair, our blue with the little logo on it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't know about ADA wise, but the, like, even Costco has Adirondack chairs that aren't as sloped in the posterior end of them, down there.
That's what makes them difficult to get out of.
When they're, yeah, when they're sloped back like that, I have a hard time getting out of those, so.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, but I mean, the Adirondacks that they have, they're selling at Costco right now, have a less, they're more boxy, if that makes any sense. They're not as angled as an Adirondack, traditional Adirondack. There's thousands of options.
Yeah, I mean, we just give us some quotes on what it looks like. Uh, okay, so where are we now?
Are we, so I guess, I guess, yeah, if I'm, if I'm listening actively, please tell me if I've misinterpreted something, but we like the shape of the concrete, we wanna keep that. We do not want permanent picnic tables.
Yeah. For now, yeah. Can we do more?
Can we have a water fountain? That was something I saw on here.
A bubbler?
There is, bingo, okay.
Although right now, our, none of our water fountains are turned on, are they, because of our water situation?
Well, are you talking about water fountain for drinking or for looking?
Yes, a water fountain for drinking.
Oh, we don't.
We don't have those.
Because of the water issue.
Manganese.
We can't turn them on until, so.
Of course, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so.
So, so those dark spots there, that's where the proposed Adirondack chairs.
Yeah, you could just put them in a circle over there.
Yeah. So we'll include those.
So do we finish on the right side with the trees over there? Do we wanna double up the trees and just worry about art and hammocks later?
Yes.
But we like the, the design there?
I like the design.
Well, it has to kinda go along that sidewalk, doesn't it?
Well, we, again, we can add the other stuff onto there or wherever. So, okay, so if you come back with.
I mean, remember, we don't wanna be ass backwards, like half of mound has been planned. I mean, if we really are gonna discuss what we want over there, we should, we should get a plan and, and do it right. And not work around, because we already had trees planted there, cause we couldn't come up with a decision. I mean, we don't have to have that side done right now, do we? I mean, if you have lights and stuff.
I, yeah, I think it's gen- we generally know what we want there, and like, the conduits are there. If we wanna skip the landscaping along that path, we, we skip it all.
Can we put any trees in at least, because those will take a long time to mature.
And you want shade.
And we want shade.
Yeah, but.
So we got the.
They will restrict it, any big changes.
So we got the six trees, then we got the other four big ones or whatever. Is that trees?
These are, yeah, these are all trees.
Nine.
Hundred.
Okay, so we agree with the trees, put the trees in?
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
What are the lime things, lime colored, are those bushes? Are they small trees or something, those things?
And that, and that's electrical stuff? Okay, and then those other trees on the middle of the whole grass?
Yep.
Are we comfortable with that now or no? Or do you wanna move them over to the right or add them later?
I mean, you want open space, but you also want some shade, so I, I, I guess I think it's kind of okay the way it is, but I don't have a strong opinion on it, to be honest.
Matt, is my okay to say that?
I'd, I'd keep that really big tree and those two, I'd get rid of the two next to the big one, I think it's gonna get real.
So like the one on the left?
So you wanna wax the one that exists.
And the one on the bottom?
Yeah, and then the big one, and then get rid of those top two.
So keep, keep the three, you're, you're saying keep the three that are touching each other?
Well, you could do that, get rid of the bottom two.
The bottom and the left?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Because these other trees will mature, right?
And you've got the bushes or trees around the watershed area.
So get rid of this one.
Yeah, you have the red dot.
Get rid of that one.
That one and the.
I'll take a cat toy, which button do I press?
And the one below it.
Tree number, I think, is more important than actual tree placement.
So you're saying this one?
Yes.
And this one?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's good. Okay, so those are out. And then what about those bush things on the top?
These are a mix of. Three, uh, smaller. That's what I can tell you.
And there are those in the line.
They're supposed to be smaller, smaller evergreens, there's power lines there, and so those.
So are we gonna put evergreens?
They need to stay low enough that they're gonna stay underneath there, but there's potential they could be lit up.
Like art of, art of mighty or whatever.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have to wrap them in the winter so that wind doesn't kill them?
They're awful close to that, they're awful, awful close to that, uh, bike path.
That's why they're there.
Yeah, but when they get hit with all the snow and all that crap, I mean.
And the wind, you know, that kills a lot of the arborvitae.
The salt is harder on them than anything.
That's awful clo- I don't think we salt that though, do we?
Blue Point Juniper is.
Need something to fall into when I fly off my e-bike.
I mean, I'm watching the wind.
You fall off your e-bike?
When I fly off the e-bike, I need to brush the grass.
Year after year, cause they don't wrap them in there.
Yeah.
Oh, six to eight feet, okay. Okay, so we're.
That's what those start at.
So we are good with those or not?
Arborvitae.
I think they're gonna be tough to maintain.
I do too.
Those are like the ones in between my house and my neighbor and they're dying.
My, half of mine has died.
Yes, exactly.
The deer ate half of them. Or they ate them all, then I got tops of some of them. We just pulled half of them off.
These are our arborvitae, is it, so Blue Point Juniper is one of them? A Norway spruce and a black hill spruce.
Okay, that's way better.
They don't look cold.
That's way better, okay.
Again, those were.
Do we light those then or?
Yeah.
I think that's cool.
Okay, so leave those in. So is there a way, without spending too much work on this, that you can just somehow delete the things that we asked you and then come back next week or two weeks? Okay, so we can actually see what we just did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then theoretically you could let us bid it, or if we need to wait another two weeks, within the final two weeks we could.
Or you tell us we completely missed it, go back to the drawing board again?
We're going to also.
Whatever it takes.
So we could say, well, that's what we like, go start bidding it, but then actually just bring it back?
Uh, no, what's.
Show it to us first.
Show it to us first and then we'll go bid.
Yeah, procedurally, we could do that, but based on, I think, we want to be clear about making sure that we've checked in with you, that everybody agrees on the changes we've made. Does that make sense?
So can you make the changes, bring it back to us, give us updated price list, updated graphics? We'll vet that out again next time and give you the okay or not, and then you'll go bid it.
Matt, are we done yet?
In front of Public Works too, before they bring it back. Sometimes Ryan can look at it.
Can you run it by Dustin and Ryan, too?
They're, they're, yeah, they're looked in.
They know about it, but yeah, alright. Well, let's do that and then, remember, phase three, we can add more stuff, or even if we want to go to two and a half and add a local artist, whatever, or, you know, welcome to Mount. I mean, I'm totally open for, you know, that, depending on what it is, right? So.
Just this finished will look lovely.
Right, okay, so let's do that for now.
Yeah, so I just wanted to be hip, so we're just gonna do the trees in the space, none of the landscaping, arch or lights.
No.
On the side.
Well, lights? Light poles, yes.
Light, light poles we'll put in.
Yeah, for the walkway.
Yeah, we're not gonna do like the prep, the uplights on the arch or anything.
Conduit, not circuits.
Yeah.
Yep.
Conduit, yeah.
Continue with the landscaping, not the updated sign.
Oh, so the, the sign, we didn't talk about that. You guys good? Can we use the existing thing mostly and just change?
That's all, that's all we're planning to do there.
That's what.
All you're doing is changing the text, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so it should be cost.
That's what they said here, update nameplate, yeah.
Okay.
And then this we will likely keep, we'll just make sure that.
Oh, we're gonna use some boulders.
Put those in there.
Yep.
So a couple more things I want to double check on is the interpretive signs, so we had planned for.
Oh, yeah.
Three, for four of those to go around the park. We would, we will actively bid, the structures getting put in, we're gonna workshop the information that goes on them yet. Also, if you guys are still.
So you're just giving us a quote for how much they cost and then we can decide where to put them later?
Yeah, well.
We can move them.
For what goes on.
We can rearrange where they're gonna go.
I think once you put them in, we just leave them.
Don't you want permanent, like metal that matches our sign and looks good?
Yeah, what I mean is we, before they put them in, we can move them, but, yeah, between, once the contractor's out there, we want to know where they're going.
And Wayzata, when they have on the hill going up to the library, they have a couple of those signs and then they have a bench sitting in front of it so you can sit and read.
That would be nice.
Which would be a nice thought for a feature.
So we have a stockpile of boulders and then we got boulders we're gonna take out of a wall. This drawing for the monument sign says we're gonna put boulders around the monument. Okay, that's not anywhere near the amount of boulders we have saved. What are we doing with all those boulders?
Yeah.
Are they in the landscaping or something?
We're gonna go in the landscaping.
Okay.
So that gets, we'll have to figure out if they, what to do with them if we're not doing the landscaping.
Over that one side, yeah.
We're flush with boulders.
Yeah, we got.
Public Works said they'd take, they have uses for the other ones that's down by the seating area.
There's plenty of places that could use some actual.
Yeah.
Boulders?
Along the erosion of half the little parks. Those would be nice size, true, if there's leftover.
And then the last part, we didn't really get too in the weeds on, there's the wayfinding signs where there's one up here, there's one down, down in this space, and then one recently got off by the one-ten trail crossing.
Do you have that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's just refresh what that looks like.
Do we have any permanent benches anywhere?
There are benches, yep.
Because as Sherri said, benches next to the wayfaring signs would be kind of nice.
So, so in that landscaping along the trail there that we just did away with, there are two benches with trash receptacles planned there.
Okay.
And those can still go in without the landscaping, obviously.
Well, we'll have benches along the walkway anyway, right?
Yeah, there were some.
You already have, we're gonna include those, so.
Sounds a lot green.
Trash receptacles are interesting, so how many did you say that'll be included? Like, I think we need one up by the pavilion.
These are just, these are just permanent ones that go with the benches. Not, I, I think we have lots of options for other stuff.
Okay, I'm just thinking up there by that pavilion thing.
I just. Yeah, bench seating with waste receptacle. So it's on a little concrete pad.
Does Three Rivers provide, well, they have a few trash cans, I think.
No, they, they don't provide outdoor stuff like that. I know Hennepin County gives out some recycling stuff, but I don't think that's what we're after here.
I would just be happy if they'd put it in the trash can.
You know, one of the things we never talked about is, you know, we have the water closet building there, but sometimes I know for the farmer's market, it hasn't been operable. Are we going to have that as the public bathroom for the park seven days a week? Or do we need to plan for portable units on the site?
So that's not ours.
More of a Jesse head question, or our question, I guess.
Well, your our question.
It's locked in specific.
It's the city's or not the three rivers?
Well, it's already there and I think it needs to be opened.
Yeah.
So we have some control.
It's like eight o'clock and it's locked.
Yeah.
That's more of an us question than Public Works.
Yeah.
I think it's like on the other side of the, on this, the one on the other side of the trail, right?
Yeah.
Right.
It's a different, it's a maintenance issue.
It's the white building.
Well, no, Ryan said that, he told me that they had just recently cleaned it all up and done all the, you know, changing it from winter to summer.
Yeah.
Rechecking all the lines, the water heater had to be replaced, I think, does that sound right? And then the locks are locking at a specific time and we may want to extend that in the summer to nine o'clock versus eight.
Yeah.
I think they've had some vandalism, so that's one reason why they're locking.
But to Sherri's question too, I mean, I don't think we need more.
Do we want to keep it open seven days a week or do we want a portable system which maybe is easier maintenance?
I don't think, no.
We've put a lot of money, in fact, they're getting ready to do the, the outside brick, they're gonna redo all that.
I know.
So I think we need to use it and leverage what we've already got.
Then you've got to have a cleaning plan every day in it.
Who plans those now?
Well, it's Public Works, it's.
Yeah.
Matt does?
He does?
Well, I know he was out there Saturday because I was out at the farmer's market a couple of weeks ago and somebody had thrown a boulder of concrete, you know, and it had fallen apart and went all the way down our sidewalk and thank God it was in the section that's cracked and has to be replaced. But I was over there with a broom, I borrowed a broom from True Value and went over there and swept it up to a pile. And he came by and he helped me get it all cleaned up and we threw it into the gravel pit that we've got going right now. I mean, but that's the kind of vandalism nonsense that, you know, it just happens, which is why I'm asking, maybe we need cameras, once again.
Uh, so we got your orders, we're good?
I think so.
And then you're gonna come back at July?
Eighth with the plan.
Okay.
So we'll come back with a revised plan, we'll update the cost estimate.
Thank you.
We will intend to be asking for permission to bid at that time.
Okay.
And, and you all will do what you want and tell us to do whatever.
Doing a workshop with, you know, adding more attractions to, to the plan.
Yeah, there can always be an interim phase.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you for the flex.
Thank you for your work and patience.
We work for you, let's keep reminding you that.
And you're not moving, so number nine, city hall and centennial building evaluation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Simmons, senior city engineer. Uh, what you have in front of you is a letter proposal from me to have the Bolton and Mank Architecture Group look at this building primarily. This is in response to Jesse passing on that there have been discussions about the potential for maybe parting ways in the future with the centennial building. Uh, and so there's a number in here, I believe it's eighty-five hundred bucks, but to bring, Adam Luckhart is the head architect for Bolton and Mank and a couple of other architects, uh, to look at what the city uses are of this building. Evaluate if there are any needed code updates or recommended maintenance that you would need to perform if you were ever to theoretically put this building on the market. And then do a very preliminary look at, just trying to round up a need statement for the things that are happening here. Primarily, it's this space, right, the council chambers, and then we're gonna take a very preliminary look at how we could repeat those needs in the existing, you know, former public safety building, now city hall, right? So we're not gonna do a lot of time spending putting costs to that because there are a lot of pieces to that, but this is an initial study focused mostly on centennial in response to being asked, you know, what, what would it take if we wanted to sell this building? So I'm, I'm open for questions, discussion.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Of course I do. I'm a little curious, you know, when you sell a house, you sell it as is, why are we going into all these details about finding all the faults and the problems with this building? Isn't that the responsibility of the purchaser?
Well, I had the same thought too and.
I mean, am I missing?
This might be torn down.
Right, that's what I mean, so why are we spending?
I think I'm more concerned, I'm more concerned about.
Yeah, over there.
Is that gonna work for this?
He just said he's gonna spend more time over here than over there and I think that needs to be the priority.
Part of that is that over there is far more complex.
Okay.
I think we need to start here with what are the, are there any other needed city functions happening in this building still?
I think we know that.
But we kind of know all that.
That's fair. We just need to quantify what is happening here. Also, we're not, we're not looking at just that. There is some weirdness with, uh, this is all one piece of property, so we need to look at titling and splitting it. Uh, part of, part of the study dollars would be to bring in our surveyor, do an initial title search and determine, uh, what's a cost estimate for us to split, basically to plat it, to split this, so that this could be sold. And then we need to look at, do we need to do anything different with the roadway, you know, or driveway access because of the sort of integrated nature of the two buildings?
What do you mean plat it so that it could be sold, like, or split it?
You would need to be able to sell the piece of property that this building is on without accidentally selling them city hall.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying decide like a.
Yeah.
And access for each.
Got it.
And, and how, and how that would be described? Do you create the driveway in between as a public street? Do we not want it dedicated that way? Do we leave that on the other parcel and then just give them an easement over it for driveway access? Do we just sell the building itself and keep the parking lot? There's a lot of nuances to things that I feel like are open questions.
This is part of that eighty-five hundred or this is separate from?
This is part of that eighty-five hundred. Giving you a cost estimate to either build or repeat a council chambers in the other building is what is excluded because there's a lot more time and effort in that.
So I'm guessing the code updates or checking whatever needs to be fixed if we were to sell it is pretty minor. It's the plating and all the other stuff, that's the majority of that work?
So we've been talking about asset management and the city as a whole, and I think, this is gonna sound like I am being judgy, but there are some deferred maintenance things. You know, we've done a lot to this building and all the buildings that the city owns, but I don't know that we feel like we have every box checked. So it's just sort of rounding up, hey, do we know hold the furnaces, do we know hold the air handle, you know, all those things? And we have, we have all that stuff.
I'm kind of with them where that's the job of the purchaser, but if it's like a miniscule part of that.
You need to care because the buyer who you're staying takes on all those costs.
Well, they can, they can do the study then.
They'll also say that's where you're gonna lower your price, you're gonna give it to me for free.
They need to figure it out.
Then we won't sell it.
I, I wouldn't pay you for it, I'd, I'd make you give it to me for free.
I'm envisioning this place being bulldozed and a development being here.
Well, that's why you're gonna give it to me for free.
Whether this road is here or it's right where I'm sitting.
But then we have to decide.
Or it goes like this.
We have to decide what can be developed here too.
Well, yeah, and that's, there's.
Brian, once you do the evaluation between these buildings, is our job then to look at that and say, um, yep, we think it's, it'd be great to sell? Or, I mean, what's the whole purpose here?
Your, your job would be to take the evaluation and use that to make decisions for the future. If, if we want to keep the building and continue maintaining it, then you have some idea of what, you know, future costs are going to be, or if we need to sink a bunch of money into it, maybe it's, it's not a money pit, but making sure that there are no red flags. Or what would it take dollars-wise for us to separate ourselves from this? The, the idea of, you know, what's the impact of what is here later, that, that's sort of a beyond the study. You know, I, I just am bringing to you the proposal for this study to tell you what it would cost to separate yourselves from it.
So that's fine, but I don't want to pay to have that checked and then six months from now or a year from now we decide to sell it and then we still have to go back and figure out what we're gonna do over there.
So we're, we're gonna do the first half of that.
Okay.
I, I proposed, it's in the letter, but I proposed that we would actually scan the interior of that building.
Right.
And that's a thing that I sometimes am away from here doing for Bolton and Mank is managing all of that scanning stuff, so I put in the letter that we would just do that for free. It's not included in the fee, but so that our architects have all of that information. Jesse and I have talked a lot about some of the weird unused space in the basement of that building because it was originally configured to be police and fire. But what the architect said was ninety-five, or eighty-five hundred dollars is not enough to look at this building and to give you all of the details on, you know, are those walls structural or not? Can we move things around, can we move doorways? So he specifically said, cost estimating, future improvements to the existing city hall is excluded from this. We will take a preliminary look and we will give a narrative on exactly what the, so you could take that and you could say, Brian, tell me exactly how much it is to deliver this and, and I could give you an accurate dollar amount of, what else would this study be above and beyond that to build, you know, council chambers and reconfigure portions of the city hall?
Just remember that this, this was brought up by me and former council member Larson. And, uh, we, uh, we've been, we've had this building for years, right? And now we have a lot of NGOs basically that are, you know, here, not NGOs, GOs, government organizations, whatever you want to call them.
QGOs? Quasi-governmental?
And when, back when Eric was here too, and I said, you know, I don't want to do and renew any of the contracts if we can't ever get out of this thing.
Right.
And so from what I understand, the contracts have a verbiage in there that says, you know, when we say, hey, we're going, you're gonna find a new place. And I don't, there's probably a grace period or something, but. Remember, no staff, staff's here. No staff actually has an office in here, they, they all office over there. Now, you know, we made a comment about a window, you know, again, there's maybe some design things that we want to do down, you know, down the road, but if you do a tour of the basement, I mean, the whole basement is basically nothing, you know, not used. And there is like the whole police department, and I'm talking like the conference room police department, God, you could put lots of offices down there, I mean, if you wanted to, right? And you could, you, you, they could finagle that out. What I'm concerned about is can we get this, this whole room upstairs over there for a car?
And parking.
And parking, you know.
Because there is no parking.
Yeah, street or, you know, with, with the festival, they all parked at the school. So they all parked in my current street. You know, I mean, we have two people in the audience, but I know sometimes we have people that come out. So how can we? Does that work over there for, for long term? We're not growing really as a city per se, population wise or really even city staff wise. A lot of people work from home nowadays, we could even loosen that rein if some people need to do that, if we somehow got more staff. We just talked about our budget and that's probably not gonna happen for a long time. This property here, I mean, we're, we're spinning the wheels, I mean, we've go through the budget and, you know, it's not like we're losing money, we're not gaining money, we're just paying the bills and, you know, new elevator or, you know, elevator, um, maintenance or whatever, you know, it's ten, twelve grand, whatever. You know, we're just doing the things and, you know, we're getting paid from them and we use this, obviously, and other commissions, but can we just use that? We have an elevator, we have stairs, we have some parking in the front, we have some parking on the side of the fire, we park in the street. Um, you go to other council, um, places, you know, even around here, I mean, some are very nice, um, but some are car tables and they just, not that I want to do that, but just saying.
We need to keep a level of professionalism, that's what we got going for it, so.
But I'm just saying, like, I think we could recreate something nice in that room up there. Uh, Jesse and I counted the chairs and I think it was either the same or more, uh, that you could fit of, of people up there. And so, again, I've been harping on this for a couple of years now and I'll put in the, the white flag if you want me to and just be done with it, but. I, I, I just don't understand why we have this whole building just because we have it, right? We have a water issue, we might need some money, we have a huge debt issue as, as it is, uh, we could sell this building, do something else. Plus, what if we turn this into a nice little townhome development on, on the lake, right? And then all of a sudden, you know, we got tax revenue coming in and this and that. So there's developers that want to talk about it, so.
No, no, I know, I'm just laughing at the on the lake part.
Well, it's on the lake, I mean, it's.
That's a, that's a range.
Cat-tailed.
But yeah.
If you cut some of the trees down, you can see the.
For me, it's no different than the first time we discussed this.
Yeah.
It depends on what we can get for it. If we get a minimal amount, I'm not interested in selling.
Have we had an evaluation done by a commercial real estate?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah, I mean, there was, it was very preliminary. I mean, it was, it's not, it's not a, it's like a market analysis.
Yeah, it's just a, yeah.
Yeah, we, we had that, I, I don't know. That was distributed to the council previously.
I mean, Matt, I agree with coming up with the real estate stuff and I don't know if you would do that or if they would do that, but this road here obviously is gonna be something we're gonna have to deal with.
Yep.
Not only does it provide access to the parking lot that Jesse and them use, but also the fire people.
We have to have in and out for the fire apparatus to leave the fire station set up. So we have to have something that comes around the back.
Even if we call this a road.
Yeah.
That's, that's all you gotta do. They can use it, we, these people can use it. Maybe the building stays here for a hundred more years and they turn into, maybe they keep it the same.
Someone just wants cash flow.
And I think part of the analysis they're looking at is what, because if we're, again, if we're going to sell this property, it needs to be subdivided.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and through that subdivision, you know, part of the analysis they're gonna look at, is it makes sense to have a dedicated public roadway, um, through there? Part of it is, is public safety, it's access, they're gonna go through that analysis, it sounds like, and figure out what is the best way to get access. Because I, you can visually look at it, but, you know, they're gonna actually see what options are out there and what would work the best.
So, one more, one more thing. The only other, the other thing I would say too, because I hate these, you know, paying fees to do studies, but.
Yeah.
It just bothers me, but, but remember, these are consultants, right? We don't have staff people to do this, right? I mean, if you think of eighty-five hundred, I mean, that's, whatever, divide that out per hour for, you know, if we had someone on staff and, you know, and we're not paying insurance and healthcare and foreign care and.
Yeah, I don't think we should spend a lot of time picking and choosing what the problems are over here.
I don't, I agree with this.
Yes, I mean.
I want to see what's the opportunities there, plus, how do we subdivide this and what are the goods and bads of that?
So full disclosure, I was trying to keep the cost down because I, when, when I talked to the architect and he came back with the number to fully study both things.
Yeah.
I said, they'll laugh me out of the council chambers at twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Right.
So I said, let, let's sort of take a staged approach here. Well, but it has to do with the number of hours that it takes to evaluate something, so let's take a staged approach. That's why I'm coming to you with this with some specific exclusions. I'm describing it as a, as a mini needs study.
Can we maybe, again, let's look at this building, because we're, I'd say less concerned about this part for now, but how do we subdivide it? Can we do it, blah, 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 and then do your little, you know, the part that you're gonna do over there anyway?
Yeah, we're gonna scan that. We're gonna look at the floor plan, we're gonna look at how the spaces can be reconfigured, we're not going to do any structural analysis.
Right.
So looking at getting rid of walls or things that are, because that's mostly a concrete block building downstairs, you know, so that's, that's a problem, because.
Structural, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it can be structural and we have plans for that, you know, it's not that old of a building, but it's gotta be looked at. And that, so specifically, what would it cost to recreate council chambers over there is a thing that I think you all have a lot of input on, and that that would be more of a collaborative process further down the road after we deliver this.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because I, I think you could exist in that space now, whether you like that or not. You could raise the roof, recreate something like this with a dais, you know, at a certain number of dollars, you know, you can do anything with money, but what's the responsible cost and, and how do we get what we want for the, the least amount? That, I think, needs a little more input to get there.
And remember, all the money that would cost to upgrade that to look like this, and we, we need more better technology as it is. People in the audience can't hear anything anyway. And by the way, I was watching your video, good job last time, by the way. Being, doing this.
Oh, yeah.
If you're not in front of the mic, you can't hear.
Yeah.
You cannot, and I should have said that earlier, I know you told him to come up.
I should have yelled, I know what to.
I can do a better job at when people are yelling from the audience or, you know, they gotta come up because you literally cannot hear.
Well, that's what I tell you sometimes.
I know, you do too.
Yeah, because they know, part of what we were doing too is creating, create the record.
True, and, and you, and you can't see anybody in the audience, they never pan to the audience. I watched three hours. I watched, I watched the three hour video.
You see.
You see him, but you do not see the chairs and who are, who is in the audience. I'm just saying, and maybe that's because he's not doing it on purpose, but it's.
That's a discussion with our camera. That's a discussion with our camera.
It's the, the angle means there's nothing else but the podium.
So if you take out the, the, you know, looking deep into this, I mean, then the cost should be a little bit less then, right?
I don't think so.
No?
The eighty-five hundred bucks is, is kinda where we're at between the preliminary of that, separate from this.
So I guess I'm kinda on the same page as Councilmember McCannany too, though, that we wanna know a better picture on what we can get for this place first. Well, we did that with.
We have that from Scott.
Was it kinda, yeah.
But that was, that was.
Over the board?
And I don't remember, I don't remember recall. I know there was a, they sold the building right over there. And so CBRE did, and so they were looking at, well, the sale of the building, but it, it was quite a wide range. It went from.
Yeah, it was like.
Six hundred to two point, like, two point something, I mean, and they were looking at properties like in Burnsville, and so, I mean, it was, that's why I say it's not.
Free analysis.
Yeah, it was free, yeah.
Comps are hard.
But I'd rather get, I'd rather spend a little bit of money getting a better picture of what we can get.
But, but I think the discussion too was what, cause this is a redevelopment. Sometimes with the redevelopment, you're gonna get somebody coming in saying, I wanna build, whatever, say, townhomes, but in order for me to do that, you know. First of all, you know, I need a little bit of help. And so there, you know, there's always that, I've seen it before where they're looking for some, some. You know, maybe reduction in price, but what you're getting in, in return is that tax base.
Yeah, we'll do all those numbers later, but.
Yeah, so, but still, don't, don't be surprised that you have a certain price. But that's not what, but it may be in the, in the end run. Lower, low, you know, lowered because you're trying to get that gain in. Depends on what use you want in there too.
In, in your, in your work, will you give us the steps that we'll have to go through to sell this building?
Yes.
Cause I think that understanding all the things we'd have to go through and the kind of timeline that will take is important to know.
Yeah, there, there is some, you know, recording times and things if you're gonna plat, subdivide it, plat it, you know, and then get it recorded to county before you could separate from it. We, we went through a lot of that. Artesa. And, and Councilmember Kessel, to your point, this is not a construction bid. There is no urgency. If, if there's no action on this tonight, that's okay. You have the proposal from me. You guys could, you know, table it tonight, you could pull it out at any time and tell us to go. Or if this is something that you're interested in getting the answer in, you could tell us to go. It, it's just information for you to know. You know, normally I don't bring you guys proposals because you just tell us to go, but in this case, we needed to be transparent about the dollars to take the look.
I know we just talked about spending a lot of money on the park, right? But I will say I get a lot of comments on water. What the hell's downtown, Danielian's, right? And now at least we don't have, we have weeds, but we don't have Danielian's anymore. We're actually doing something about that.
They're working.
People like that. And again, if you build something nice, people are gonna go, oh, wow, glad to live here. I was at church and ushering and one of the guys comes up to me and goes, you know, your sidewalks looks like a third row country.
It does.
And this is before, before we fixed them. But, you know, we're doing these things to make this look better. So when someone, and especially in July twenty-second, when we talk about water, I wanna be able to tell the public and say, hey, here's the deal. We're looking at all options and we're sitting in one of them. And if we can get something out of this and help reduce your water bill rate, you know, when we, if we do, you know, go forward with this. I, I don't know. I mean, we, I think for eight grand or whatever, I think it's worth, we need to look into it, or we need to just, I just need to let it go.
Well, I think it gets down to, to what it will it cost us to renovate that building to meet the needs of city council and the staff.
Right.
Versus what are we gonna get out of it?
Yeah.
You know, are we gonna make enough to even cover the cost of?
Again, I'm not a contractor, but I know, I'd imagine you can get a couple contractor bids for free. People, you know, well, if they want the job, I mean, you know, here's the deal, this costs you fifty grand and we get a million, you know, whatever.
No, I get it.
So I, I, I think we're gonna make a great, I think, why are we even having this building? We have it because we just haven't. We just, we never moved on.
It's paid for.
Paid for, we just, yeah, we're not, we're spinning wheels. I mean, we're not losing, we're not making, we're just.
We're spending, we're spending money maintaining it.
Yeah, but.
You know, that's not a huge.
Well, we could be shorting ourselves in a different way too by just sitting on it. So, I mean, I'm not super thrilled about spending the eight grand and just kinda, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna do nothing and I don't have any better ideas. All right. So are we okay just going with the study for now?
I think so.
Mostly.
I'm gonna get a yes idea eventually.
What?
I'm gonna get a yes.
I've been a no person. I'm not a no person.
I would agree with it, but based on what Sherry said, Councilwoman Pugh. Um, I think we need a timeline, a very valid timeline of the different steps that we need to take to actually sell. Yeah, that's.
I'll lay out, I'll lay out a path for a potential sale of, of Centennial Building and, and the property identified that we wanted to sit on. We can, we can include some discussion on redevelopment. Up to Scott up for what that would look like from a legal standpoint, you know, what, any guardrails. I, we also have probably a little issue over here with. I think the skate park comes on a part of this property, so, you know, again, we're gonna have to separate from part of it and make sure it's road fronted and all of that, but yes.
I guess I'll go with it, but, you know, I, my greatest concern is that we won't get enough out of this to make a difference in paying any bill. Or even fixing up the place. It might be a wash and maybe that's okay too.
Yeah. Well, again, we don't have to say yes until. I mean, again, we're excited this to get the answer.
We need all the information.
This is what we're.
We need to know.
And I'm guessing it's gonna bring long-term benefit, but we'll see.
I, I will, I will say that, you know, we've, between myself and then we brought in that, do the market analysis, we've done a lot. For, at, at a, like a, at a free level, you know, but at a certain point, you need to get a deeper analysis of, like you said, it, it's no different than if. This is, this is, um, this is a true redevelopment project that you're looking at, um, that I've been involved with other cities too. And there's a lot of times that the cities will have to, through economic development or whatever else, will have to do what they're talking about, um, to make it marketable. Because, um, you know, you may, they may come in with the idea, you know, I would say for, like, here's how, here's how you can do it, make it marketable. And then maybe the developer will come in and be able to pay for, like, the plating and other things like that, but that's, that'll come later. And then the negotiation part, but in order to be marketable in some of the plan. You know, we've, I think we've come to the point where the, the inexpen- the free advice kind of is, is hit as far as you can go.
Yeah. Okay, so do you need instructions?
I, I need any direction to pursue it if that's what you would like.
Can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move forward with proposal from Belton, I can't talk.
For the city hall and Centennial.
For the city hall, Centennial Building.
Evaluation.
Whatever, yeah.
All right, we got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback on that. We'll, we'll take that and integrate it into the report. We'll plan on bringing that back. Maybe I'll even introduce you to Adam, because he's a very likable dude who talks about things that are more curved and square, so.
Are you bringing this back next time or, no, you're a couple times from now?
Couple times from now.
By the end of summer.
Yeah, I can't decide if we wanna do end of July or beginning of August, but that's what I'll shoot for. I'll let Jesse know so we can plan for it.
Okay, thank you.
And there's just something to, as part of this, Maggie had provided me with, like, the plans for this building. I don't know if that's helpful, and I digitized them.
I mean, if you've got them scanned, send them over.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, so I can, I have, I can send, I can send them over to you.
I, I, one other thing that, after what you were just talking about, I think we need to include a cost estimate for a demolition of the building by the city. If you were to pursue that with a contractor yourself, in the case that when, when, if you do any additional market analysis, it might be more marketable with the building gone.
That's what we're trying to do.
That way, at least you have a dollar amount.
Either way.
You have a dollar amount to make that decision.
Yeah. All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, number ten, we got four-year mayoral term consideration. So this was on our priorities list of discussion items. And I'll let you take it, cause you mentioned it. Cause I ran my mouth. I think I brought, I brought it up for our priorities. I'm not, I don't know what your guys' opinions are on it. I don't, I don't really have strong opinions either way. But it seems beneficial to get a serious candidate, for someone that wants to do it for a full four years. And for continuity of projects for, for staff and council, I think it's probably beneficial. I know we talked about it, I think, in our workshop a little bit, and I think we're all kinda like, eh, couldn't think of any cons. We didn't see much on the con side, but, uh, any other opinions on, I mean, we've been two years forever, right, since the start. You can see other cities that, um, that are four years, and then, of course, I know, I know one for sure just changed. I don't know how often.
Just changed.
Orno's the most recent.
Orno's the most recent.
Yeah.
Just again, a caveat to this, this wouldn't be until the next term, so the next person to run and get elected as mayor, me or whoever runs. It'll be that term. It's not this term that I'm sitting at. As you can see in the memo, it's next.
Twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven, January one, twenty twenty seven, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to it because I think that one of the things that we don't talk about is that I know when I came on council and Paula came on council. We've represented a real change in Mound City councils, because it had been the same folks for fifty years, you know? It was like it just got passed on within a certain group, and so we really represented a change in new people. Now we sit in a council, you know, half of you have lived here less than ten years, you know? And I, I'm the longest living in Mound, but, you know, the council's changed, so you have new people, you don't have necessarily the historic, always nuances. So one thing in your leadership, I would say it does benefit an organization if the leadership, being the mayor. Has a little bit longer tenure to carry out, because the council, fifty percent of the council can change every two years. And how do you keep that congruence? Tonight, we talked about, you know, that decisions were made by the previous council. And half of this council wasn't there, and so you didn't have input into things. So I guess I'm speaking in favor of looking seriously at you doing a four-year term for mayor for continuance and continuity.
I say if it ain't broke, don't fix it. As a resident of, I've had, I don't know, I've been voting since nineteen ninety. There's, I have appreciated the chance to be able to vote somebody out. I mean, we've been lucky, you know, with our mayor. There have been plenty of mayors, as I, I actually wrote down all the mayors and went, okay, which ones have I, I, I like the, the opportunity. And not one of them only served one term, so I want them to earn their, earn their vote. Some of them were eight years, and then you, Ray, and is it Wegshai, were two years, so.
I'll be honest, I didn't think of it that way.
I, I, I like, I like as a resident, giving me an opportunity to say, you didn't earn it, I'm not voting for you this time. And, you know, because they've, every single one of the mayors had also served on the council for numerous years, so they already know.
They have a legacy.
What they're doing. And, and the, the other thing I, I worry about is you work your tail off. And I think that there are some people that may be not attracted to a four-year working your tail off. If you work for two years and go, you know what, I love it, I, I, I think I've earned the right to run again and get reelected, they already know what they're in for. And we get good candidates. I'm against it. I, I like the two year a lot. And, and I've appreciated being able to vote every two years for a new mayor. And as I look back, I, I did change over a lot, over all the years.
I didn't think of it that way, to, to be honest. I mean, like you said, I mean, the, being able to vote someone out or keeping someone in that's doing a good job. I mean, it can go both ways, I suppose, but.
Well, and the public will tell you.
I'll let you know if you burned it.
I think that became evident this time for Jason. I mean, you've done a good job, people respected you, they wanted you to stay. No one ran against you. So, I mean, yeah, I, I think I have to agree with the two-year thing as well. That's my opinion.
Well, I'm not gonna be the deciding vote on it, so.
Well, I mean, I just made the argument for that, but, you know, I, I can say that, um, you know, the majority of cities in this state have two-year terms for mayors. And so why should we deviate from it? I gave the, the point of continuity, because there has been a change. And, you know, so this is a new council, new people in the community. And that's not to say that, that there's not value in that, you know, and strength and, and, and the skills that people bring. But it maybe also encourages more people to think about it.
I had in my head that I just wanted someone that was, you know, like a four-year would, uh, lead me to believe that you get someone who's just really locked in and serious about it. And not that someone that's doing it for two years, you know, can be or isn't, but.
What if you get a really bad one? You think you're going right, and then you're like stuck with them for.
For four years. Exactly.
Well, you know, you know, I agree with your point, Sherry. I mean, as a council member, I'm sorry.
You're okay, I'm fine.
It's always when you sat there, I feel like I'm ignoring you. You know, there's a huge learning curve to being, becoming on the council, I think. Now, yes, there's a learning curve to being a mayor, and I know you work your tail off, but you've also had the experience, the two years you were on council, to already see how hard Ray worked. And how you wanna do things differently. You know, and so I think there, I think the newness with council is much more critical for a four-year than, than the mayor. Because I think that, again, we get to replace you as a. Community, if, if you haven't proven you got the, what it takes.
Yeah, it's kinda the whole term limit discussion. You know, everybody's like, oh, you know, they should have term limits for senators and, I was like, quit, quit vote for the people. Why you vote them back in? That's the problem. The, the majority of people vote them in, so then they're back. If you had term, you know, what's, what's, the term limit is an election.
Yep.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, so.
So what do we need to do?
Well, we had a resolution on here if we were gonna be prepared to vote on it or not, but I guess I'm just. Let me just say one last comment.
Oh, yeah, we did.
No, there's a whole thing if you, if you do wanna do it.
Yeah, there is a thing on that.
If no one made the motion, we don't have to act.
Again, I don't care one way or the other, and I even, I've talked to him too, and I was like, should I even vote? He's like, it's technically, yes, you can vote, cause.
Cause it's for the mixture.
It's not, it doesn't affect me, but I know how much Orno got crap for this. So I just, I said, this is bad, brought up not just by him, it's been other people in the past that said, oh, you should really make it, and I'm like, I'm not bringing it up, so. You know, someone else wants to bring it up. There's never a not awkward time to bring up this, you know, but I guess to the point of it, of what we're doing tonight, it's like if someone needs to make a motion on it, I guess I now I. I don't even really know if I have a preference enough to change it to four years and I wanna make a motion on it.
If I could just jump in quick too, prior to adopting ordinance, we'd need to, uh, like, put it on the website for a couple of weeks anyway. So I sort of came here tonight, be, trying to check off one of our several.
Yeah, priorities.
Priorities. I didn't come expecting, I didn't come expecting a vote necessarily. I mean, you could certainly say scrap it. But, um, if you want to do it, then we would notice it and then bring it back in a couple of weeks. It's not, like, it's not one that we have to send to the paper or, like, we're not sending it to residents or anything, but, so, I guess. If you don't want to decide then, you certainly don't need to. But if you would like to pursue it, then you were, I was looking more for a direction, the staff to prepare it, number it, put it out there and then bring it back.
So you could do a consensus, what, consensus one way or the other.
Consensus, we could remove it from our priorities list as well and just not act on anything and table it or, I don't know.
Well, I'll make a motion to table it on our priorities list.
So she's gonna remove it?
Well.
Oh, for this year.
Well, if you table, if you table the matter, then it's still out there and you may bring it back. It's some, can be removed from the table. If you wanted to, and I don't know if you need to, cause you never voted, I don't think you ever voted on the priorities list, do us as more consensus. So if there, you can go, we're on, you can have a discussion, say, well, maybe you just remove, remove this from the priorities list and it won't come back again.
Then maybe the motion should be to just take it off of our priorities list.
For twenty twenty five.
For twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No, and related to that though, another issue we haven't dealt with, and I'm not gonna run again, so I, I can say this. Is looking at salary increases for the council and mayor.
Yeah.
You know, because we, we have to do that in the non-election year, right? So it would be this year.
You can, yeah, you, what you have to do, you could, you can increase your, your salary, but it would go into effect. For the next elected person.
For the next person in your seat.
In your seat, so, so, so if you, if you were, cause some people just kinda like this, you got, you still have four years left, it wouldn't go into effect until four, the four years. Yeah, so it's, it'd be staggered.
Yeah.
So my, so like, I guess to make it clear, it's like if I were to speak to that, it would be for the next person in each person's.
Well, and we'll double check it, but either way, it's not gonna be, it's not, you don't vote, you're not voting yourself a raise, you're voting the next person a raise. And, and if that's something you wanna look at, we can provide information on how that works, but it, it, it's there, so it doesn't look like you're doing self-dealing. Yeah, it's the same, it's the same situation.
I don't feel like. And I remember in the last comparison, uh, even with our increase of where we're at now, we're still one of the lower rates, so it's not. But it's, it's just something to raise, because it is a lot of work and for some individuals, they may appreciate or need that. That small increase in compensation. And I, I would, I would only be proposing probably a hundred dollar increase. In each category, I'm upset.
So we all make what?
That's a lot of money.
Three.
Fifty grand.
Three fifty and then four fifty?
Four fifty.
But that is.
That's a lot of money over a year and we don't have excess cash to burn. I, I don't feel like I need a raise, let's just put it that way.
I would do it for free.
I mean, yeah, I feel, I feel like this is more of a volunteer.
From day one, I said you don't have to pay me.
You're not getting paid?
No, I, I, no, I, I do, but I said, you don't need to pay me.
Well, you could defer and go to the water treatment.
Well, you know, I, I wanted to bring it up because I thought.
That's true.
Three hundred dollars a month.
Where do, where do we get three fifty?
Well, people say you get what you pay for.
That's true, four years of that could go.
Oh, I don't know, I'm a professional volunteer, so.
So what I.
Could be my donation tonight.
I, I worked three full-time jobs volunteering, so, um, okay, well, anyway, I just wanted to bring it up because I thought this is the year.
Yeah.
In which we should, but it sounds like the consensus is no one's necessarily interested in it, so I won't. Take it any further.
When I put in my name for council, uh, I think whoever at the office gave me the packet and they're like, oh my God, I get paid to do this?
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, that's kinda, something, you know. Someone in the seat in the future can bring it up if they wanna. But I will say, mayor.
But I will say, mayor, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, and I have clients that are in different states that they have smaller towns than us, and I'm talking a lot smaller. I think like thirty grand a year to run the, to be the mayor, in very similar, just smaller towns, and like, well, God bless you guys, but, and again, that's, you know, you gotta think about that if you're, you know, for the next person, uh, for the next council. If, you know, we all don't, don't do it for money, but, you know, maybe that's the cream of the, you know, do we want someone that would wanna do it for, you know, a nice retirement job, or, you know? And then, you know, they get money to go, to do this, so, I don't know.
I donate my income to them.
I know, I know, uh, you know, Myers and the senator, I mean, they don't make any money either. I mean, for all the work they do, and, you, even with their per diems and stuff, you know.
It's a true labor of love and commitment.
It's public service, yeah. So, okay.
Okay.
What else are we doing? Is that it? Okay, comments, are we done with that? We've, we're done with the, so, two years for, for now, right?
Yeah.
Uh, eleven, comments and reports from council members, Councilmember Pew.
Well, um, I went to my favorite farmer's market, our favorite farmer's market, on Saturday. It was a great day, um, there, um, in search of getting more produce, growers, but, but you know, this has been a strange season, but it was really a good vibe, as always, lots of people mingling. There's a new youth, uh, marketing group, some girls who are making, I don't know, bracelets and things. And they, they seem to have quite a little tent, there's a chocolater person there, and another woman who's making scones with natural flowers on top. So there's some new vendors. Um, but all in all, it's, um, going well, but you know, it's hard to sell the hot coffee when it's ninety degrees.
It is hard to sell that chocolate, too. I thought somebody was like melting, dripping out of their fingers.
Yeah, so, um, but they're doing well, and glad to see it. And they said that, um, they got a lot of the folks from Artesa come over, and I said, good, I said, we wanted them to feel like they should be patrons, and, uh, they really are taking a place there. Gillespie is going to be, um, a, a formal participant this year in Festival of the Lakes. They're gonna have some family games on their site, so afterwards, they're gonna have that, what do you call it, corny?
Potato.
Potato. The toasts, they're gonna have that and some games for kids. So they'll be doing that, um, you know, starting around one o'clock on their site, so that's good that they're getting engaged in Festival on the Lakes. And I think that's all, other than, you know, I was there for the legislative session. Unfortunately, Ja, um, Hoffman was the author of the bill that I was working on, on aging, and, um, you know, I'm really sorry to hear about him and his wife, um, and just pray for them that
Tragedy.
that they heal and do well. She's home now, but he is still sick, so that was very unnerving, and I did appreciate the, the email from the police officer when I saw it. That they did kind of reach out to us and sort of say, you know, they were thinking about us, so, that's all I have.
Councilmember McNeely?
I'm good, I have nothing tonight, thank you. I already said enough.
Okay. Councilmember, that's all?
I'll just echo Councilman Pew's statement about, um, I bumped into Officer Beenick on Saturday too, and he had already given me an update, and he was just like, that they had inventoried the, all their cars, and were patrolling certain areas more, and just kind of, I was just really impressed is the right word, but thankful, I guess, too. They were very, um, I don't know, I was just impressed on everything that they had already gotten done, so, you know. But I don't have any updates or anything.
Um, I'm trying to think, okay, so, let's see, Ryan and them are still working on getting the flags that we, the question, I don't think you were here when I talked about that, but they're working on getting some donations from the Legion, as well as finding out how many more we would need to bring them from the front entry, well, the entry sign here, and then to three points to the traffic light and to surfside, in time to have them up and placed by the time we do Spear of the Lakes. Um, they are also working on giving us an estimate on the time it takes them to cut and maintain each of the parks. Um, there's a spreadsheet that they're working from, he said he should have that completed pretty soon, I don't know if he's sent anything to you, Jessie? I know he's working on it.
Well, it sounds like we're gonna get twenty-five flags a year.
Oh, that's so great.
From the Legion, yeah. No, 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 I meant the, um, Dustin was working on that, sorry.
Yep, I don't have that, but I do have the flag, I have the flag info.
Um, so anyhow, yes, the flag info they're giving us, I think you're right, twenty-two or twenty-five regular flags, and then four POWs that we'll use, you know, so that'll be nice. Um, also, I know that Maggie and I talked earlier today, Artesa has volunteered to also take care of the, um, Veterans Plaza. Um, the Legion is also working on a plan to help as well, so I think we can leverage both groups and try to get that, 'cause it's a bigger area and it needs a lot of love.
And it's the first thing you see when you come in?
And it's the first thing you see when you come into town. And as you noted, Ryan and them are working on downtown area, um, especially there around True Value. Um, also, the ballards and stuff that are in between on the roads, that we've got a lot of them that he's working on, getting some estimates. He'll have to put that out for bid, because a lot of them either need to be replaced or just totally removed. Um, so we may need to provide some input on that at some point. Basically, we just look sloppy, so we've had cars hit them. Um, I'm not really sure, Jessie, I was gonna reach out to you, but if the county commissioner for Hennepin County can work on getting somebody out here to help clean up some of their signage, they're bent, people have hit them, they're rusting out, they're leaning, I mean, it's not a good look. For whatever reason, I've decided I wanna make sure our downtown area looks nice.
No, who is hitting all these signs anyway?
A lot of it's like when big trucks turn, like they'll clip them to, like, the ballards and.
And they're turned and twisted.
I thought we were just getting rid of them, because it's like.
The one I, I was looking at is at the post office.
Right.
Have you noticed when you're in the, going in the drive in the post office?
You know, I thought about that too, it's like when you drive into town, the first thing you see is the Veterans Park, and then the other side is the post office, front landscaping, it's just like overgrown.
Yeah, well, they used to have a group, yeah, they used to have a group that took care of it, I don't know what that, where that is.
Can we ask the shopping mall to, to do something about their, um, landscaping?
Across from Paul.
The one Wells Fargo's in, um, what's his name?
And then, also, the traffic lights.
Yeah, because, you know, the edges are weeds growing.
They're peeling, all the paint's falling off of them.
They need to clean up their.
Those belong to Hennepin County as well, don't they?
I would assume so.
Jessie, were you able to find anybody who volunteered to straighten out that flagpole down at Veterans Plaza?
Is it not straight?
Well, it wasn't straight today when I drove by.
It's definitely on their list, I will follow.
Is it in front of the post office, or is it like part of the, consider the sidewalk, or is it ours or theirs?
So, when I talked to Ryan, it's like the first ten feet or something, and so the rest of it belongs to them.
So I noticed that too.
Same thing with the, um, people that own the shopping center.
Yeah.
So the front part from that little wall thing that we've got there, that's got wall and rock, rock iron, that mulched area belongs to the city, the rock area with just one tree left.
And in front of the post office, it's like last fall's leaves.
See, and I'm guessing, I don't know, there used to be, 'cause there was a sign up there that said that volunteers took care of it, so that's something we would probably need to reach out to the post office and discuss.
We don't have an on our list for volunteers for parts, but we don't.
No, no, but I think there is a group, though, that volunteers with the post office that used to take care of it, there's a sign up that says in memory of some.
Oh, it was a garden group.
Yes.
They have a little, little thing there.
So, um, yeah, so anyhow, that's all kind of in flight. Um, I have some ideas, and I'd like to discuss with the parks when we have the parks meeting. Um, I've been going out and looking at some of the, um, property and making notes as well. So, to answer your question, yes, I've looked at some of them, but I still have quite a few to go. Um, and that's really taking a visual and looking at what's there, what's not. There's a lot of differences, partially because the list that was in the twenty forty plan obviously hasn't been updated. That needs to be corrected and updated. There are, um, another list, which was the volunteer list, that we were looking for volunteers to, you know, take care of individual parts, they don't sync up. So, um, I don't know, we're claiming we have thirty-eight parks, I can't get to thirty-eight.
You know, I think we need to step back a little bit, 'cause it sounds like there's a lot of duplication. And how, how this is happening with staff, because the Parks Commission has been working in the last couple of years about updating the list of who adopted parks, and we recruit people
Correct.
for adopting parks.
And she is.
But then, but then you're doing something on this now, too.
No, I'm just using it to create a list. I'm not doing anything with it, other than the Veterans Plaza, which was about getting the veterans and the Legion to work on it, and then I heard that Artesa was stepping in as well.
Yeah, 'cause that, 'cause, you know, that's a park that the Park Commission is also recruiting people.
Right.
So, you know, we need a little bit more communication.
Right, which is why I was talking with Maggie.
What we're doing and stuff, so. You know, I wanna comment on, you know, I said before I went to, uh, why, why can't I think of the name of this park? Clearview, whatever.
Center View?
Uh, City View, Center View.
Center View.
Center View. And I was on that dock for two hours with my friends, they were fishing, I'm not a fishing person, so I just talked to the fish and, and the blackbird that kept sitting, landing on the thing, which is beautiful. But there was one of those boats with the, what do you call it, the wake thing? And when it went through, it rocked that dock. I mean, can we ban those things?
That's a no-wake sign.
The Lake Conservation District, they voted, uh, I think it's, is it two hundred feet now?
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
The water patrol.
Yeah.
But I think, right from the center view, it was probably slow weight. He, he, he was way across on the other side, he wasn't like up near us, but the wake that he created shook that whole dock. I mean, it was.
So I go out and fish, you know, by myself, and I'm on my twenty-two-foot boat, and I'm just about falling off.
It will swan your boat.
Yeah, and I'm not even talking the wake boats, I'm talking the yachts, the, you know, I'm on hooks, right? So I'll, I'll be over there, go fishing, and I about fall off the back of my boat. But that's, it's legal. We could talk to Ben Brandt.
It's classified as a beach.
That's tough.
Well, you know, you just think about what is it doing to, to the lake bed, it has to be just really tearing it up, if, if, making that much.
Call me at seven in the morning, I'll.
Uh, I don't know if you heard her say weeds at the strip mall by Wells Fargo?
Yeah.
You can look in that.
Well, and I was gonna reach out to the Wells Fargo maintenance team, because they've got three dead trees in their planter boxes, which.
And they used to keep that so neat up there.
Well, and they have a department that does that, so I just have to get somebody on the phone.
All right, I'm gonna go through my list.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go for it.
Get ready, get ready. So, uh, Matt Council by your house?
Yes, oh my god.
It is seven feet tall?
I just took pictures today. Yeah, it's, it's up to here.
No, no, it's lower my head. I'm six feet tall.
I didn't climb into it, but.
What is it? What are you talking about?
The natural weed, prairie grass. Anyway, just, so, just so you guys know, I reached out to Dr. Carter, I'm Matt Council rep, and actually, Jessie and I met with him at Caribou a couple of weeks ago. And we said, he said, what are your top three concerns amount, and I said, well, number one is your front lawn. And I'm not kidding.
It's bad.
Uh, it, anyway, so they have no-mo signs.
Yeah, and then they put the no-mos on.
Then right when you get to Mantrista, it's beautifully grown.
I know, I know, so we're, you're working on it, and I did, uh, email him as well, and I said, you gotta, you guys gotta come up with a better plan, 'cause this isn't working. And then I talked to you, and I don't know if I should be saying that, but anyway, you're looking into ordinance.
I'm looking into it, and I'm also talking with Jessie, so.
Okay, all right, full circle, I'm saying it.
You gotta team up.
If you remember too, Jason, or Mayor Holt, and I think, Polly, you might have been there, when we went to the open house, when they first started that.
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be beautiful.
They, no, they promised us that they would at least do a strip, 'cause we were already complaining about the no-mo, and they did a strip for about six weeks, and then all of a sudden it went to.
Yeah, it's.
They're gonna have.
This is not a prairie grass thing, so they need to fix this.
It's a weed festival, yeah, totally.
Uh, Spirit of the Lakes is coming up, this, we'll meet again before that, but, uh, for calendar purposes. Um, I think, did you say you can't do it now?
No, and I'm sorry, 'cause you guys were gonna do it, and I said, oh, I'm gonna be in town this year, but it's my fiftieth, and I got talked into doing the golf thing on Saturday morning, so I, I just gotta go be at my big day, so I apologize, no, I won't be there.
Okay, um, you gonna be there?
I think so, yes.
Okay, are you willing to work the tent?
Yeah, I can come help you. Yes, I can.
Come help or work it?
No, what's the difference?
Well, the difference, the difference is the three of us were there last year, and that's it, the whole time.
And the whole time.
Yeah, and it was, it was hot.
Well, you don't have to stay the whole day, just do the, like, the morning or something.
I'm gonna do the morning, and then I'm gonna do Gillespie in the afternoon.
What's that?
I'll do us in the morning and Gillespie in the afternoon.
Okay, so you'll come in the morning? Um, I gotta, what does it go to five?
I don't remember, but we did it for both.
No, just Saturday.
No, just one, just Saturday.
Anyway, I'll, I'll kinda hang out after the parade, maybe for a couple hours, and then I do have to go to a different event and then come back to town, so.
Okay, now, I'm not sitting there all day by myself, let's just get that straight.
Oh, I did.
I really don't.
Two years ago.
What are you gonna do?
I don't think you need to be here all day.
It's a city, it's a city council. No, I'm just saying, it, it looks bad when it's just empty, though. It really does, so.
Yeah, well, of course, we, but take all the stuff down and leave.
Well, we, we ended up doing that a half hour earlier, whatever it was, but, um, I'm just saying, if we could kinda like, you know, you know, split it out a little bit. So like, we don't all have to be there at the same time and sit there, but like, you know, if you take it, you know, the, you know, right when the parade's done or whatever. And then, you know, we, I don't know, if you guys wanna think about it, we can talk about it next time, but.
And the purpose of this table is to do what?
To be connected to the, to the city that votes.
It's, we're there to talk about the city, and we had those beautiful boards that Kathy made about the water system and stuff.
We could put those out again, it's been three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we.
And we still have them, I actually have an extra one that Matt just gave me for whatever reason, so.
So we had a lot of conversations with that, with the park, what, you know, a list of what are we doing for the water, you know? Hey, by the way, you wanna come out on July twenty-second, we're gonna talk a little more on that.
That's a good idea.
Blah, blah, so, it, it was just a great, you know, you were there two years ago. We had a, I think, we had a great time. I mean, I think it was kinda fun, actually, talking to residents, no one really complained, like, really bad. So, anyway, I'm just saying, you know, if you're in town, you can help out. Um, we'll kinda try to split it, and then if we all wanna leave, then we'll just shut it down, so. Uh, I know Ryan, you know, he was helping us at the end, I think, shutting it down, so.
Did he put up the tent last year?
I think he did, yeah, yeah, they're all just ready to go. We're in a little different area, which was good, it was a good area. Like, the other one was, we were kinda on the end, and it was.
Well, that's where everybody was that year, they kind of shuffled things around a little bit.
But last year, we were in front of the playground, it was great, 'cause it was, it was sort of a lot of traffic going through.
All right, I got like six more things. Uh, pedestrian crossing, uh, the trail crossing on Dakota, right by Dakota Junction, right? Again, I, I think you guys know this, but it, we're gonna, they're gonna redo the road a little bit right there, right? To make it easier to cross, doing a pork chop in the middle. My whole thing is, we wanna make sure that we're gonna get an actual flasher. Um, so I've reached out to the, uh, well, both of our county commissioners, and they're looking at it to see what, you know, what we need to do, so.
There's gonna be a pork chop right there by Dakota Junction?
I have like the engineer version from the county, and I've, and I can, you know, Jessie can share that with you.
So it probably means you won't be able to turn left.
You can still turn left, but it's gonna be.
You can still turn left out of.
It's gonna be, the trail's gonna be there, you're gonna have the pork chop, but you're still gonna be able to turn left.
That's gonna be a mess over there.
I hate pork chops.
The county is doing it, we've complained about it, this hopefully will be a better thing anyway for safety.
What about the businesses, are they aware?
It's fine, it's just gonna be like the other one that we have. It's all one-way anyway, all the way to where I said it, so, with turn lanes.
Well, I know the few times now that I'm not driving at all, but before I quit driving at all, when I'd get to that light going north on Commerce, people would get, they'd be in the turn lane.
To Jubilee.
And, and they would speed ahead of me.
So we're, they're fixing that too.
So they'd get turned to going to Jubilee.
There's gonna be a mess there, too.
They're, they're fixing that too, so.
Are they putting a pork chop there?
I don't know, it's hard to, he's gonna get a better, he's laughing, he's gonna get a.
Well, you know what a mess that's gonna be?
First of all, don't blame me, it's the county.
I'm not, I'm, I'm looking at you, because you know what a mess it's going to be, school mornings and.
I know, Katie, my wife, was complaining about it for, and I said, you know what, for five minutes on, you know, in the morning, whatever. I mean, COVID was really bad, because everybody was staying at, you know, working from home, taking their kids, and I was like, why don't you just get, have the kids go on the bus? Whatever, you don't have to worry about it. Whatever, any other worry about it? Uh, anyway, again, the designs, it's a little hard to read, but you're going to get a colored version of it, so we can actually understand what it looks like, it's literally engineering.
Like, are they going to get rid of the parking, I mean, there's, that's a lot, yeah, because it's a really narrow.
I don't know, just, more to come.
I'm not excited already.
Well, again, I wanted to make sure you guys got all of those.
I'm not, I'm not mad at you, I know you have nothing to do with it, I've been dreading this day for a long time, we've been talking about pork chops down there.
Yeah, yeah, the, the one thing is, I, I do agree with the safety of having two people on two lanes, both sides, and someone's going to get smoked eventually, so, again, our new crossing is phenomenal, so. Uh, library, July fifth is closed. I'm not going to go through all the water stuff, but, um, you know, just high level, we've submitted, uh, to the, uh, Senator Smith, fifteen million, and then, uh, Congressman, uh.
Seven point five.
What's her name? Morrison.
Morrison.
Uh, seven point five, uh, now, remember, you don't add those two together, we're probably going to get.
You went through all this with us, remember?
Why not, but not the public.
So the public.
They were perduing.
Well, one public and then whoever's watching this later. And then, uh, how much through, four million through, um, what is it called again? I'm getting tired here.
I could just rip through quick, we, so we submit for congressional directed spending through the Senate for fifteen million. The community project funding through the House for seven and a half, that was sort of the compromise in between, so those will have to get reconciled. Hopefully, in a bill that gets passed, if the, if the government, or the federal government manages to pass a, uh, funding bill before the end of, or September. We are currently eligible for three million for, uh, emerging contaminants and then up to five through Water Infrastructure Fund, in conjunction with any PFA loans we might take out in the future.
Yeah, and again, more to come on July twenty-second. Parks. Oh, Parks, uh, do you want to come up with a workshop? We have another workshop this next council meeting.
On the eighth.
On the eighth already.
Up July?
Yes, at five.
Well, then can we do the next one?
Sure.
Twenty-second. Uh, remember, that'll be the water meeting too.
Oh, gosh.
So that Michael, I don't know how many people come up, but. I don't know how, I mean, we can pick a different day, I think we like doing it, but.
Do the first meeting in August, or we could just, I don't know.
We want to do that, and that gives us time to.
Can we just go wrong and do another day?
Because we're going to do that water meeting in July, so.
Why do we have to do it before a city council meeting?
We don't have to, that's just, it's a lot easier, kind of preferred, I guess.
Since we're volunteering, let's find a day that can get it done sooner, because I think the Parks Commission needs answers.
Or do you want to do it on the Park Commission's day?
I personally would say.
I like doing it before meetings, because it makes us, like, get a lot done in an hour, you know, but we don't have to do it before a meeting.
I think this is just, I'm talking about the city council version of discussing.
Yeah, I don't want to do it with Parks yet.
Yeah.
We're not ready for that.
So we could do it at the twenty-second, or if you wanted to do it the first August.
What's happening on the twenty-second, I'm sorry.
That's the, the water.
Open house?
Yeah, well, yeah, we're just going to give an update, so, again, I don't know, maybe nobody will come up.
I mean, why can't we do it before that?
We could, yeah.
Well, I, I'd vote on that.
All right, you good with that?
Yep.
That's the twenty-second?
Yep, okay, so the next two meetings were coming at five, uh, for a workshop before. And then, well, I just said, uh, new website, thank you, looks great, uh, looks phenomenal. And then, all, I think it's your art, right, on all the Facebook and stuff, very nice, so, good job. And thank you, Maggie, for all your work on the website and.
It was a labor of love between us, we became best friends.
It does look very good.
Well, it's always little things.
Well, you're going to find little things here and there, I'm sure, but. Uh, I just signed up, just so you know, for the notify me.
I did that already too, and I already got a notification.
Did you? I haven't got any, I just did like last night.
I did when you posted the, uh, open, or the meeting notice, it came right to my phone.
Is that different than the other notifications?
Yeah, this is a new, a whole new.
So we need to broadcast that to everybody?
Decide what you, it's already on the website.
This is a new one online, so remember, we wanted to push information to people, if they want to go out there and give us our emails, so. And so we, I think you just put in your name and then your email.
You go to our website and do it.
Yep, and then you can pick all the different things.
I have problems, I've never been able to get rave, for some reason, it just doesn't.
Raves is, yeah, and then separate. And then last thing on the, on our fire, uh, partnership thing that we're trying to work on, um, it keeps getting pushed, right now, we're trying to figure out, um, there's some pension issues with, with them and then with us, and we're trying to see if that can work out, and then plus the budget, uh, you're talking about that too, so. Hopefully, more to come in August. I think we're meeting July, right?
Are we meeting July?
Yeah, well, me and you and him and the chief will meet in the next couple of weeks, and then I think the group meets mid-July. Uh, we put, pumped in a couple of them, because we weren't really prepared to talk about anything else. That's it, that's all I got.
All right, anything else? Here none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.